Seven oh five, we'll call the meeting to order. Our first item of business is a public hearing. Vinnie, can you read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the, that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, seven PM in the West Boylston Town Hall to consider changes to the existing West Boylston zoning bylaws and prohibit all types of adult-use marijuana establishments as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter ninety-four G., Section one in nine thirty-five Code of Massachusetts Regulations five hundred point zero-two in the industrial district. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you'll be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the petition are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, whose hours are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, eight to four, and Wednesday, nine to seven, and Friday, eight to two. Paul Anderson chair West Boylston Planning Board, and it ran in the Telegram and Gazette on April tenth and April seventeenth.
Okay, hearing is open. This is a citizen's petition, so we welcome the folks who brought this forward to come forward and explain the petition and what they'd like.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is there any formal informality if I have to introduce myself?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
I did sign in.
Name and address.
Okay, my name is Mike Raymond, and I reside at fifteen Emily Drive in the Angel Brook complex. And I did circulate a petition to some of our neighbors in Angel Brook, and we do have concerns about the, any future marijuana establishments to go in, in the industrial area. I know at the present time, there are two proposed or approved marijuana cultivation sites in the industrial area, as well as a retail shop, and we have a number of concerns about the existing proposed sites, as well as any future development in the industrial area. Our primary concern is the, the problem of odor. And in the community host agreement prior to the, during the proposed sites, we were told that we don't have to worry about any odors or anything like that. The odors primarily are a skunk smell continuing to permeate, permeate in the atmosphere. And we cited examples of Colorado and Oregon and other locations where odor was present in cultivation sites. Well, we don't have to go to Colorado, Oklahoma, Oregon, or Washington, or any other place. I'd like to read just a couple of sentences from a news bulletin put in, put out three weeks ago in Sterling, Massachusetts. "A Central Massachusetts Gymnastic Academy is making a stink over what they say is an overwhelming odor on their property, and they are blaming the medical marijuana facility just stone throws away from them. The gymnastics school says it's worried that this could put them out of business because of some of their parents are so upset. They say the smell is making its way into the gym and being trapped inside. They are concerned because they say a thousand kids are breathing this odor in the gymnastics facility. Sterling Gymnastics Academy has been operating in gym for over seventy, over twenty-seven years. It wasn't until two weeks ago that a parent reported a skunk-type odor that smells-"
That have since made their way-
...into the gym. Now, I'm sure, like we were told, that there's not going to be any odors emitted from a cultivation site. This is an example of the town, one, one town over, that is experiencing this particular problem. We're concerned about decreasing property values. We have three marijuana facilities located stone throws away from our property, both at Angel Brook as well as Hillside. There are a hundred and thirty-two units of housing at Angel Brook and a hundred and twelve units of housing at Hillside. What's going to happen to the property values if an additional marijuana establishments are put into that, into that area? Both properties pay over a million dollars in taxes to the town of West Boylston. With decreased property values and people moving out, there could be a possibility of decreased property taxes. Again, these, the facilities are going to be paying a fee for over five years. The people at Angel Brook and Hillside hopefully will be paying the town of West Boylston taxes for more than just the five years. We're also concerned about the pesticides being emitted into the area from these facilities. We don't know what type of pesticides they're going to be using, and again, if these are admitted, not only are we going to be smelling this, the odor of a skunk, but also we have to be on the lookout for possibly breathing in environmentally objectionable odors from these pesticides that they're going to be using. We don't know the water and sewer ramifications of these facilities and any additional facilities that are going to be proposed in our area. Again, they're going to be using the same water and sewer facilities. We don't know about our water pressure or any of those types of things, and I'm not, I don't know if they've any presentations to you about just exactly what the water sources are for the, for these two existing facilities, and any additional facilities in the future, that's going to have an impact as well. We hate to see our water pressure go down at any point. The ownership of these facilities also, I think, has to come into question. The, the retail site on, on Shrewsbury Street, the, they're going to be fed by the cultivation site on one hundred Hartwell Street. The owner of the retail shop, and I've heard different things from planning board, you've, you've asked them to, to eliminate certain things, especially the U-Haul trucks that are parked in front of the, of the facility on, on Shrewsbury Street. And I think you've asked them to remove them. The planning board actually is asking to remove them. Tonight, they're still there, and they've been there for months after you've asked them to remove those sites. So if they're doing that type of thing, what are they going to do when these retail establishments are set up, and somebody comes to them and says, "Well, why is this happening, or why is that happening," or the, the odors that are being admitted? Again, we're going to have to fight, fight, fight to make sure that these odors are eliminated. There's also with these cultivation sites, a possi- possibility of explosions on the property, because in the processing of the, the marijuana cultivation, they turn certain things into oil, and that oil is very explosive. And the cultivation sites that are existing in Oregon, in Washington, in Colorado, have experienced increased explosions in the facilities. Now, that could lead to a possible catastrophe, again, steps from our doorsteps. We were told in community, the cultivation sites at, on Shrewsbury Street, during the host agreement, a question was asked of the, the individuals, "Are you planning any greenhouses on the property?" And at the host agreement, they said, "No, we're not planning any greenhouses on that property." Well, they're going to be putting in a twenty-five thousand square foot greenhouse facility on that property. Again, when we had these host agreements, we were told certain things, and these things aren't coming to reality. We're also concerned about the quality of life at Angel Brook as well as Hillside. What are these cultivation sites going to have, what type of effect? If we're not able to walk in, on our streets because of the odors, or just enjoy life in general, if we're not able to sit out in our backyards and enjoy a cookout or something like that because of the odors in the area? That's going to affect the quality of life for people who have worked hard all their lives to kind of enjoy some of their, their life, their, their remaining life in, in our, in our neighborhood. Another curiosity is that I'm very, I, I kind of walk the area, and I kind of walk around one hundred Hartwell Street, and it amazes me the, the amount of construction that has gone on in that facility in the last couple of weeks. They, I'm sure you haven't given them any type of approvals for anything going forward, but day in and day out, there's construction in that facility, and I don't know without they're getting prior approval for some of the plans, how they can go ahead and actually begin construction on a marijuana cultivation site before bringing that, their, their full proposals and plans back to you. I think that's probably something that should be looked into, and again, before they go to any, too much further, just exactly what they're doing. They're also, I'm concerned about a possible greenhouse put on that site as well. There used to be school buses parked in the back of the property on one hundred Hartwell Street. Well, all that land has been cleared, and I don't know what's going into that. Again, the owner of one hundred Hartwell Street, I don't know if they're going to be putting a greenhouse there, coming in with a proposed greenhouse. And if the zoning is not changed from, to allow marijuana establishments in an industrial area, it's very easily that they could put a greenhouse on that property that they've already cleared, or some other property in, in the area as well. Probably wondered what this can is. If I were to say to you, if I open that can, and this room is going to smell like a skunk, and every time you come into this room, that can is going to create a skunk smell in this room, would you want to come into this room and live through that for another three hours, or every time you came into that room? You would probably tell me, "Do not open that can. That's what we're asking you to do. Do not open any more marijuana establishments in an industrial area." Thank you.
If that concludes the presentation, I'd like to have board members speak first. Thank you. Who would like to speak?
I'll speak. I'd like to hear myself talk.
Sure. You go for a summary.
Me, too.
Oh, good. I mean, I, I agree with his concerns. It's awful to have to be put through, but the, well, I don't know what construction is going on. Have we approved something that I don't know about?
Well, this, I mean, are we talking about the, the industrial condos that they-
No, this is, sounds like it's a hundred and-
Oh, and one hundred Hartwell, okay.
Which is across the street from the Old Town Hall.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So I don't, I don't know what's going on over there as far as construction, if there's-
They haven't gone through site plan review.
No, well, yeah, I know it hasn't gone through here, but I don't know what else has been approved for them to do. All right, so I don't know about that one.
Is there a potential answer on that one? We happen to have a building inspector here.
Oh.
George Tino, do you-
As of apple, if you follow one hundred Hartwell-
Yeah.
One hundred Hartwell.
The only thing that's going on at one hundred Hartwell Street at this time was a demolition from the old building, and they are in process of doing that. They are looking for tenants. There's nothing proposed that I have, that's come across my desk, about anything that's going to be going in there, except for warehousing and one of the businesses that's already there. I have heard nothing, no one has come in for any permits or anything of that nature.
All right.
Thank you.
Just as an aside, I used to work there, and it's, they are constantly reconfiguring the inside of that building, so, I mean, um-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How do you know who the person that just spoke is?
That's our building inspector.
Building Inspector, the new building inspector for the town. Has the board of selectmen entered into any more agreements with those?
We had a meeting upstairs. The selectman, board of selectmen, approved the article to go on the one.
Oh, no, I'm talking about other, I, I mean, I think I know about two, no.
Those applications for things.
Only those two are there now.
And there's a retail, and not, not in the area that the article was in.
This one.
The two retails that we've talked about have been on, right on West Boylston Street.
I thought the other one is, is Hartwell and Shrewsbury Street, right?
One eleven Shrewsbury.
Oh, all right, so there's that one, and then the other one on Main Street.
Over here.
West Boylston.
Okay, so those are the only two that we know about, that anybody knows about.
Do they need a host agreement for a growing facility? Is there a host agreement for that, or is it only for re-
I thought they did.
Yeah, for anything.
Actually, we have our, the chair of selection here.
Yes, they do.
So they need a host agreement for that.
It's for any recreational marijuana establishment, regardless of what it is.
Do we have any others besides the two retail that were just mentioned?
Growing, we have the growing, I can't recall which one, though. We voted on one growing.
There's one a little farther down Shrewsbury Street next to the Silverdans.
Near the railroad, one was.
Okay. So, but those, I mean, that's, it's not like there's a dozen of these things that I just don't know about.
Well, retail, we only allow two.
Right, there's only two, so that's over. And there's one more growing?
Growing is, you know, the, based on the bylaw now-
Yeah.
We can, the town can have any number of growing facilities.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just trying to say how many we got right now.
Just one.
So how many host agreements have been agreed to? Two for retail, and one additional for cultivation?
Cultivation.
And manufacturing. That's, yeah, that's-
Cultivation slash manufacturing.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, and, and as part of the rules for any of these is supposed to be security, odor control, parking, all this kind of stuff. I don't know what the Sterling one was, I don't know what their problem is.
It's all governed by the CCC state.
Right, but their requirements are, are grand and wide.
The requirements are very strict about odor, so I'm surprised that somebody at Sterling has had to-
I'm also surprised that the smell is coming out as far as the, they're not supposed to be smoking it at the place, you know, I mean, it's-
Right.
I mean, I assume that's the smell.
No, it's the growing, the cultivation creates an odor.
Okay. Sir?
Phil Mallett, Dean Evelyn. We've had marijuana establishments now for many years, Colorado, et cetera, and the technology seems to be out there, and yet I've never seen a convincing description of odor eliminating technology in any of the units that we're talking about in the town of West Boylston. We hear at one meeting that, that the filters would have to be changed more often, they hadn't really considered that. It seems to me that that's a disqualifying thing right there.
It's supposed to be-
If you don't know how, if, if you don't know if you're going to change the filters or not, if you're not sure about the technology with regard to odor control, I mean, my gosh, we're supposed to take you at your word? Doesn't make sense.
Now, the state's involved in all these regulations.
And they were-
And so we're going to rely on the state to come down here and follow up on complaints-
They're right in Union Station. I mean, this is their, their home base is right in Union Station now.
Yes, ma'am.
You mean the DCR is going to do it?
No, the CCC, what's it called?
Cannabis Control Commission.
Cannabis Control Commission.
But my point nevertheless is the technology is not ever described properly, and it doesn't seem to work.
Okay, can I keep going?
Yes.
All right. I agree that this is, the, the point of this meeting is actually to come up with the thing to bring, the, the statement to bring to town meeting, and we need to come up with something that we think, well, the, the point of why we do these hearings is to come up with something that we think is palatable to town meeting, if you wanted to get it to pass, or, you know, or not pass, whatever. If, if, we need to come up with some language and a limit that we think everybody will vote on and approve. So we got to come up with that, and I don't, I don't know of any wording that I've seen for this zoning change. Does anybody?
Well, could possible wording be include a moratorium until the already passed-
Oh, that's all we have?
Yeah.
Until the already passed projects have had a chance to settle in, so that we know what we got?
Well, yeah, but I don't know if that's going to be our zoning.
How will we know, how will we know what we got until, unless we-
Three to five years.
Chair?
Can I also say something? We also have a petition that's going at the town meeting to amend that prior approval for marijuana establishments in the town of West Boylston. This is one of two petitions. So the other petition is going to be voted on at the town, at the town meeting to not have, to, to not allow the establishment of any marijuana establishments in the town of West Boylston.
And that's been voted on twice now.
Twice now, right? Twice.
Okay. But it's, they've proposed it.
Yeah, I was just saying, yeah.
Is that not a zoning one?
No.
No, that's not zoning.
So there are two ten taxpayer petitions.
Okay.
The ten, the first ten taxpayer petition is a general bylaw to prohibit all adult-use marijuana in West Boylston.
General bylaw.
General bylaw, which requires two-thirds of the town meeting vote.
No, probably can't read.
I'm sorry, the simple majority. Whereas zoning, this is the zoning bylaw we have now, it prohibits only in the industrial area.
Right, so it's changing the-
As I read, it prohibits in the industrial area.
So if the first one passes, we pass over this, and we don't have to worry about it? But-
I don't know, it's up to them, right?
Well, if it's prohibited, prohibited, that's, there's no need to have a zoning bylaw to allow it only in the business.
Yes.
So Raj McCarthy, one forty-three Hartwell Street. The, one of the informative meetings for the retail site, he, I, I brought up the concern that it's literally right next door to a youth baseball training camp. It might be during the day, it might be at night, they have a ball field there. He said that they hardly use the ball field. Well, they use it all the time. They're now putting billboards on the ball field for sponsors. He said that he had spoken to all of the parents and to let them know that there was going to be a retail shop next door. I happen to have, know some of the parents, and just in general, just said, "Hey, did you hear that there's a, a retail shop going in there?" Four different parents said, "No, didn't hear a word." And I'm good friends with the wife, or I know the husband. You know, so he didn't evidently, I mean, unless he just happened to eliminate these four from asking them, you know, "Do you feel that it's okay to have a marijuana distribution there?" It's a youth site, which works, you know, granted, the kids nowadays know what it's all about, but do you want to put it in their face at, you know, five, ten, twelve, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds? It's, it's not the place for it.
And I guess the answer to that is no, and that's why in our bylaw, we put a boundary that it couldn't be near schools, churches, parks, a bunch of things like that, I mean.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, he said it's a private, private park.
That's the problem with that one, that's a private thing.
Again, again, it's all controlled by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Right, but, yeah, but he's the owner of the park. He's also going to be the owner of the, the retail facility. He's got the license to, you know, you know, have the youths and everything there, you know, training them and have the schools there, you know, and, and I guess the question is, if it's a school, if, if a school is having their players go there, isn't there some sort of school participation in that then? Wouldn't that have any effect on it? Even though it's private, you're still having something from the school to go to it? You know?
Yeah, I think that's-
The kids going to that and being exposed to that.
Right.
And keep in mind, the stores do not have big signs, "Buy pot here," or whatever.
Oh, I agree with you. I mean, I've seen the stores, you know, I've seen what they have, you know, that's why they make it, you know, harmony, you know, and, and stuff like that, whereas-
Fancy names, yeah.
You know, yeah, it's, it's the names that, you know, people just think. The kids nowadays aren't stupid. Might be lazy, but they're not stupid. You know, so it, they know what it is, you know, they hear it, they see it, they, they see it on TV, they, they read it online, whatever.
Sure, like they would know if there was a liquor store that was right there in the corner.
Excuse me?
Like they would know if it was a liquor store right there on the corner.
Exactly. You know, it'd be the same thing.
Okay, I, I think we have to act first.
This question, well, I've entered every marijuana subcommittee meeting that they've had in the town. I've been handling, but we're trying to make sure that this is the most clear. That issue was dry, brought that issue, very issue up. Two things were told to me. It's already been given to town council, and because it's not a public park, it's a private park, it doesn't carry any water. The other thing I was told is, the owner of the baseball field said it closes down to allow the, the retail shop, because it, it closed the baseball field down.
You mean, you mean during those hours, or permanently?
Permanently.
Change of use from, if there's a conflict.
If, I think, I think what, I think what he's saying is enough. I think that one of those meetings he-
Yeah, was that a meeting?
So he said, "If the CCC says this is a baseball field, you cannot have it, he's more than happy to close it. I want the marijuana store."
We see which one makes more money.
Yeah.
Well, yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth, oh, sorry. Which one of us?
Either one.
Barbara White, sixteen Emily Drive. My condo is the last one on Emily Drive, right next to one hundred Hartwell Street. I have severe asthma, odors trigger asthma. As you can see, I can't talk. We're a vulnerable population. We all have some kind of health issue. Many of us have respiratory issues. This odor is enough to trigger a lot of ER visits, ambulance rides. It's more serious than I think. The town all of a sudden has dumped these marijuana establishments surrounding elderly communities. It doesn't make any sense. It also is life-threatening for some of us. I really urge you to do whatever you can, because we are a captured audience. And this has evolved around us without, but most of us haven't even used marijuana. I mean, I, as a population this age, I just see like we're being abandoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
I just, I, I don't want anybody to get the impression that this was the intent of the recreational marijuana bylaw. It was kind of the opposite. The recreational marijuana bylaw was to keep it under control in the right places where we felt it was, you know, away from people, like, that it would bother schools and all this kind of stuff. If it's not working, we can change it, but I think that we should get back to how we want to change it. You know, and, and, I mean, I, I appreciate all the arguments for it, but that's, that's sort of-
Right, but what they're saying, what they're saying is the way that they want to change is to not have it in the industrial, but they're still going to allow it in the business, under this zoning article. So it would be allowed use under the business district, so it would move it away from their community, their portion of the area.
It would limit then to business and commercial.
No, it would be also at the corner of, corner of Hartwell and Shrewsbury Street. There's a business section there.
Yeah, that's right.
And there's a business section up at Oakdale, and there's a business section in-
In Pinecroft area.
Pinecroft, yeah.
Little, little spots, but this, the way this is proposed, it would not allow it in industrial, and it would only allow it in business, because at last fall, when we held public hearings and presented everything, it was proposed as business and industrial. It would have been good to have this voice at that time, to have people give us, so we don't have to do it twice, but if this is an issue which it sounds like it seriously is, this is one way to correct it, which makes sense.
But it doesn't eliminate the one, the, the one at the corner of Shrewsbury.
The retail.
That's going to be a retail.
At the Hartwell.
The retail's not going to have it.
And I'm, that's the trouble, I don't know the CCC rules that well, but I thought the retail establishments don't allow it to be consumed at the site or on the premises.
Right, that's right.
So you're not going to have odors from retail.
No.
The odors occur from the growing facilities, and I don't know that there is a requirement for odor control in the growing facilities until it reaches that nuisance level, and then that-
I think they have to have it, odor control.
Well, then, I've read in the articles for Charlton, for Sterling, and a couple of other places that have odor problems associated with these growing facilities. What I would hope that, if this doesn't pass, the planning board is going to be very strict in requiring-
Sure.
-odor control, but this is before that. If we can get it not to occur in the first place.
Because it's in those folks' best interests to not, to follow rules and to, to, to not have the odors be, to not have it become a nuisance, right? Because they want to have a business that is functional and not anger the community, right? So it's their, it's in their best interest to try to meet the regulations.
In the operator's best interest.
That's right, that's right. And, and I mean, and it's true that a lot of this is, this is, all these things that are being proposed are indoor, right? And so there's, there are more controls that you can have if things are indoor, right? As opposed to outside. So, like, I mean, I don't know if any of you ever grew up next to farms, but I did, and there's a lot of odors that come from farming at different times of year that are not pleasant, and, and there's no controlling any of that. So, so, you know, if it's indoor, at least you have a hope that you might have something.
Now, I would like to point out, the planning board has not received any applications for special permits for any of these facilities yet. That, it has not come to that, to that stage yet. The planning board, as Vinnie mentioned, would conduct a site plan review and make sure that the state and local bylaws were all adhered to. Raj?
To add to her, is it white? So we did the town, we had the first marijuana, we had a moratorium, and then we had a banning article. If, after that, the banning article did not pass. So then the second town meeting, we had a banning of, complete ban. That was the first article. Then only we went for the zoning. So, to, for the town, you know, we did put twice, total ban of the marijuana in town, so, but did not pass.
Right, so, and it's probably who shows up at the town meeting, because we've had a hundred and, what, a hundred and fifteen people?
Yeah, that, that's.
So it's getting people to show up to vote the way you want them to vote, so whoever shows up wins, basically.
The, the first town meeting, we had a, we had a cor, we had getting a quorum was a little difficult, but the second town meeting, we had the quorum.
Has anyone discussed, has anyone discussed at any of the other meetings, the select means meeting or the joint committee, about, um, the legal ramifications of passing this and then having people, business people who have already made plans for this?
I think, you know, I'll, that, you know, we'll leave it to the town council.
That the, has town council made an announcement?
Town council will be there during the town me, town meeting.
I think that's important.
The town meeting is really where the arguments about this need to be presented. What comes out of tonight is the wording.
The language.
The language and the wording that will be presented at, at, at town meeting.
The language is, this is the language.
Oh, okay.
The language is, we are not changing anything.
That's it?
That's the language, they have.
Right, that's the language.
That's the language, we'll be going on the warrant.
Oh, yeah, on the, on the petition. Now, I didn't get, I didn't get a chance to call it yourself.
Nobody else was commenting on this. I'm Elizabeth Cotton, also Angel Brook. Um, I heard someone there say, well, you, what, we only have one cultivation? So, we have two, right?
No, we, the bylaw says, two retail stores, only two retail stores, cultivation, there is no limit.
Right, no, I understood.
Did we, how many?
The bylaw allows any number of, uh, cultivation in that, uh, industrial business and those areas.
Okay, I just want to clarify that currently, we have two. One at one side of Angel Brook, near the jail road.
Yes, near the railway track.
And the other at one hundred Hartwell. Because I, I went to the meeting.
Two?
Yeah, there's, there's two. Shrewsbury Street and, um, Hartwell.
Okay, and there's a, and there's community host agreements for both of those properties? Okay, so, okay, so two.
Someone said one, and the one on Hartwell is right next to Barbara White.
Okay.
That's a good nice street.
Right. Uh, what, yes ma'am?
Linda Allen from eighty-seven Angel Brook. I was just very interested when he talked about picking the four parents who didn't even know about this. I think we need to carefully listen to the people proposing these things, which side of their mouth they're talking out of, because, um, the one on, um, Shrewsbury Street, he told us at a meeting, and I think somebody were there, so you know, that he had a meeting with all of the parents from the, um, ballpark thing, that only two parents or three parents had any objection to having the marijuana grown or sold right there. And, and he's already said the four people, and he said they didn't even know about it, so.
He didn't, he didn't get all of them, apparently.
I'm just saying, but that's how he kind of presented it, and I think we just have to listen carefully. And the same thing with the odor control, they're so assured that they're not gonna have any odor. And you, and you're hearing from these other towns that you're having odor, so we have to listen carefully to what they're saying and see which side of their mouth they're talking.
I'd be, I, I understand. I'd be interested in, in hearing if the state is involved in any of those problems in Sterling, uh, because that's clearly against regulations. Raj?
I'm not sure, and it will comfort you, but, uh, I was in a few cannabis control commissions meetings early on. So this is one of the issues people brought it, brought up. So they said, you know, we will take care of it. That's what they said. So they will address it. Cannabis controls will address the nuisance, cannabis controls, they are the one. So that's what they, they said.
Oh, yes, in back of you, yes sir?
Oh, yeah, Richard Pally, fifteen Angel Brook. Uh, first, I'd like to re, uh, say that Mike Ragnan's initial presentation that he made a few minutes ago reverberates throughout Angel, Angel, uh, Village. Totally reverberates. I mean, we're all concerned with every issue he mentioned, every issue. And they're negative issues, they're not just issues. In any event, uh, I want to just bring to your attention, first of all, am I allowed to ask questions, or just, I am, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, first, I want to just mention one thing. During November twenty-eighth meeting at, um,
Manana?
No, 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 uh, it was at the, uh.
VFW.
Yeah, yeah, US, yeah. Andrew, um, his name probably not right, Kaczakoff, uh, November twenty-eighth presentation, he stated specifically that his mari, his marijuana, mari, marijuana cultivating plant in Maine, which is smaller than the one he's proposing here, is, and this is a quote, definitely an odor producing facility, unquote. He said that, okay? That's his facility in Maine, and that was his own words. And further, he acknowledged that the facility, which is in an unpopulated area in Maine, has some sort of filter that they change every three months. That's incredible for someplace like West Boylston. You don't just arbitrarily change a filter every three months. And let me, and I'm gonna get back to that in a minute. Uh, it doesn't even begin to address, uh, what would be required, uh, for the locations here in West Boylston. I would look to the town of West Boylston, God forbid this gets approved. I'm, I'm totally against it for all the right reasons that it was presented to you, folks. But I would look to the, to the, uh, town of West Boylston to do the following, and, and, and I don't even know if you would, but A, create your own strict odor criteria to impose on these facilities. B, require the facilities to self-monitor twenty-four seven such odors for compliance. C, establish significant daily penalties for non-compliance. And D, do periodic, uh, well-announced and irregular visits to confirm compliance. So, that, that would be kind of what I would want our town to take control over. In other words, be the enforcer, okay? So, those things are, uh, and, and I don't know if you'd be willing to do all those different things, but they have to be done. They have to be monitored and see if those facilities comply. The way I look at it, folks, is West Boylston Planning Board and all the other, and any other related board is our last line of defense. You're it, not us, you're it, okay? And you've gotta protect us, God forbid this thing goes through, because we all don't want it to, or most of us don't want it to. Uh, so you're our last line of defense. Please keep that in mind at all times. You've gotta protect us. Uh, and I don't mean just by, uh, uh, having something written, I mean, you have to monitor these facilities. You have to enforce the rules. You have to, uh, en, not encourage, but you have to insist that they have twenty-four seven monitoring of their own, uh, odor. Now, all that being said, uh, I, I'd like to just revert to one paragraph in, and I'm not sure you folks know better than me.
No, that's recreational.
Recreation.
It's section three thirteen, adult use marijuana. You folks, you, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, paragraph E, subparaphrase two, talks about odor.
Got it, sorry.
And it says, and, and I'm, I'm gonna read this, and this is amazing, because we had all these discussions, but this is an amazing statement. All marijuana establishments shall be ventilated in such a manner that no odor, not any, not partial, not offensive, no odor from a, from marijuana can be detected by a person with normal sense of smell exterior to the marijuana establishment, uh, or at any adjoining use of the property. Now, I know they're talking about marijuana, but you have all the derivatives of marijuana. So, uh, my concern is, odor is our biggest concern, uh, as a, as a nuisance, uh, as well as a health issue, as was said before. So, all that being said, I, I just want the town of West Boylston to understand that you're our last line of defense, and I can't say that loud enough.
Well, I can assure you, the planning board will do everything that, that, this is a petition to undo, or change, rather, a zoning bylaw, which requires the vote of the town meeting. So that's out of our hands. But, um, if, unless this, unless your proposal passes, these things will happen, and, uh, I'm not.
He just read exactly that.
Yeah, he read it.
A little, a little bit different, though, because this talks about the escape of noxious odors or gases, it doesn't limit it to marijuana.
Well, he did the second paragraph, which is the odor for marijuana, but the first one is the, on the other two.
It's paragraph E, E two, E two, sub two.
And, and also, you know, you have skipped one of the line, it's, it's covered by the Mass General Law, chapter one, 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 section thirty-one point, thirty-one C. So that's governed by the state.
Yeah.
So the, the order is very strict. So they, they often, several times, you know, this, this came up several, several times during the presentations. They all say that if we have a law, we will follow it. So.
And I, I, I sense there's some, I sense there are some doubters.
Very, very.
And also, our, our, no, based on that, our bylaw, but the subcommittee on this, they worked so hard to draft this, all the languages. It's be, they looked at it, very different towns, very different areas, compared with the Mass, uh, Cannabis Control Commissions, six hundred pages or something. So after that, you know, this was written.
Would the town of West Boylston accept any odor coming out of that facility?
It's very clear in here. It's clear in here. The bylaw is very clear.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Is that, is that, is that a correction?
Chris, Chris, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Chris, the, Chris.
All right.
Um, in the community, in the community host agreements, have these issues been addressed there? Or are you relying on the, on this?
I think the host agreement said they must follow all of our bylaws and the rules of the state.
Okay.
The host agreement is, you know, we are just saying, you know.
Mister, the next meeting that Kaczakoff gentleman had, he said that the filters he's using in Maine, he found a new system that cost him a lot more, and he's gonna put them in this facility. Now, I, I'm, I'm just saying what this gentleman said. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm just telling you, he said that it's a new system that sprays water into the air, that also kills the odors before they even get to the filter. Like, that's, I have no idea what he means, I just know that.
Sure.
But the bottom line is that the town of West Boylston will accept no odor.
Correct.
Correct.
And it's, and it's written.
It's all written in the bylaw.
And it's written in the law, so it's enforceable.
So, so if somebody from Angel Brook Village, or Hillside, or on Hartwell Street, if somebody raises their hand and says to the board, hey, there's an odor, then, then you would take it from there?
The zoning enforcement.
Zoning enforcement. Well, that's, and that's where I have a problem, is that, we, it's hard to, we've got these laws and these rules that sound really good, but the enforcement is the key, and it's very difficult. The planning board, once it's done and through the site plan review, and they come in and promise all these things, like you had mentioned, simple U-Haul trailers not being parked where they have parked tonight. They've been asked for three months to remove them, same owner, they haven't moved them. So, as far as what I see, the enforcement is a difficult situation. And he, he's got a thousand things going on. There's gotta be ways to enforce things without having someone stand out there and say, oh, yeah, no, it's okay tonight, oh, no, it's not good. How are you gonna do it?
Does the CCC have?
Well, how is the planning board gonna make that happen?
Does the CCC have any idea about how, do you enforce these?
I think the CCC will enforce.
No.
Let's look that one up. I don't think that's gonna happen.
We, we need, we need for them to do self, self-monitoring twenty-four seven. They need to do that, and you could inv, inv, uh, invoke that on them. Self-monitoring for zero, uh, odor, as well as significant penalties, daily penalties, if there's an odor, uh, and they have to fix it. And, and give them a certain amount of days or time to fix it. I mean, all of this is enforcement. As, as he pointed out, Vincent pointed out, uh, enforcement is not your responsibility. You're the planning board, I understand that. So, maybe a lot of our concerns should be brought up to another board, or the police department, or some, I don't know who. But he, he's got a very good point. You do all the best you can to protect us, and you'll put everything in writing, but who enforces it?
It's, any of the zoning violations, it just goes to the zo, our zoning officer, zoning enforcement officer.
And I think what we can do is, if, if this does not pass, or even if it passes, and someone proposes one of these in the business district, I'm hoping we can work, and we're, we've gotta meet with our building inspector following this meeting, and we're gonna try to come up with different amendments, changes to our zoning, ways to make things work and cooperate and coordinate a lot better. And there may be, if we look at Charlton, they were farther along, it's Charlton, right, that had this same issues. They are farther along into the process. They may have found a solution that we could then, the building inspectors, building commissioners talk a lot better, we can talk to the planning board, but look for ways to improve it. But I still come back to the fact that whoever shows up at town meeting wins. So you need a big presence at town meeting to prohibit it in town, or prohibit it in the industrial district. Those are your two options. Otherwise, it's gonna be issues farther down the road when it gets approved by the planning board, and then we're pushing to try to enforce something that someone's like, yeah, I'm doing the best I can, kind of thing.
Well, there, there should be, there should be a clear method by which residents of the town can direct their complaints about such a facility. That has to be made clear, you know, if and when these happen. Raj?
Can I, this, we will have a, another meeting for the site plan review. So, during the site plan review, when we have the site plan review, we can always court this, all these conditions, right?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can have them put in whatever this fancy system is.
That is there, but we can always specify it.
Yeah.
And also, you know, if you want to enforce, can we, how do we enforce it?
The enforcement is through the police and through the building inspector, so that's still where, I mean, they can put in this billion dollar system that's gonna work all the time, but when it gets too expensive and they shut the switch off and say, well, we'll let it go for two days and not let it run, then we'll turn it back on. And then, I mean, I get a office that runs their heat that way. It's one of those things that you kind of make it work.
That's tough, I mean, man.
But that's the idea, that's what happens. To save money, they'll cut corners.
Dave?
Dave Phineon, eighty-six Thurling Street. Um, I just hooked up with Mass General Law, one, 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 thirty, thirty-one C. And it says, a board of health, for all the legal authority constituted for such purposes by Board of the Town and City Council, shall have jurisdiction to regulate and control atmospheric pollution, including but not limiting to the emission of smoke, particular matters, sort of cylinder gases, toxic, and radi, radioactive substances, fumes, liquids, gases, industrial odors, and dust, as may arise within its bounds, in which constitutes a nuisance, a danger to public health, or impair the public comfort and convenience. So, the Board of Health can go out there and do inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and that's, and that falls under the nuisance requirements, but if you talk to any Board of Health agent or member, it's really.
But, but, because it specifically says.
Oh, it definitely says that, but if we have it in our bylaws that it's a zoning issue, the zoning enforcement also has the authority to do it. So it can be either one, but I'm kind of at the thought of, let's not get that far down the road.
So, so the Board of Health, you know, what they inspect anytime they want?
Any, anywhere, anytime, yes. And the fire chief has similar allowances to go out and inspect if there's a, a health or a safety concern. So there are criteria that are out there for that.
One final thing, uh.
Yes, then we can, yeah.
On that same regulation that was discussed, regulations of adult use marijuana establishments, there is, probably is something the zoning board, uh, the, the planning board can do. Number five, mandatory findings. The planning board shall not issue a special permit for a marijuana establishment unless it finds that the marijuana. a marijuana establishment unless it finds that the marijuana establishment is designed to minimize any adverse impact on the others in the general public, section number five. So.
Yes, that's our, that is our responsibility, yes.
Not in this meeting.
Yes, not, yes. Okay, I'd like to wrap, wrap this up and still listen to everybody. In the back?
Peter Young, the keynote, and location, my name and friends. That's common, I don't need to be talked about, but the new yard, the other facility, that was already indicated to the people, you're not supposed to have track there. You didn't know about it, and that's so elementary. However, somebody did say that I could remove it, hasn't been done yet. You realize, of course, a person will be told, see that as a very serious obstacle that we're gonna be confronting, we can't even address that.
I absolutely understand, and we also don't have a state law standing behind us, or a zoning regulation standing behind us to prevent that, so there's a little bit of a difference, but I absolutely understand what you're saying.
Okay. The other minor thought that I had, we have all of that, is, I grant you, you didn't have many enough people to attend the meetings, I understand that. Putting that aside for a moment, the people that we elect, no, they have some responsibility to do some investigation, and roughen through, they put on their presentation, come inform us people, even the ones that didn't know, now, there is a problem with these types of businesses and communities, that they're gonna create an issue with the community, from the gas to the odor. I mean, you people are elected, I'm not saying you're gonna walk on water.
Oh, they don't.
No, we're just working people.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, someone should have realized, before they went forward and allowed these people to invade us, wait a minute, what's this odor situation? Okay, that research is along the Midwest, or Northwest, they're having all these issues. Are we gonna have them? We need to do something, regardless of who showed up or who's leading, we're in serious trouble here.
I understand, thank you.
Two questions, I agree with Vinnie in regards to, it is up to the public to get to the meetings, to do the vote, and Angelbrook is a large community, Hillside's a large community, and if there is a meeting to do it, they need to get that community to the meeting. It's great to come to these ones as a small force, but if you want really to be heard, it's gonna go to, as a big force, as well as the rest of the community to come out. You mentioned that the business district, is one eleven currently already a business site? It is, so it doesn't, it's not having to go for rezoning, it's already.
It's, it's in the business district.
It's in a business district, so it's automatically a business, even though there's a home and everything else on it now.
It's zoning, right.
That's the retail establishment.
That's the retail, yes.
Correct.
They're proposing, right.
Okay, I didn't know if it was already, or it had to go for rezoning.
Right, right, it's, it's already in that zoning district, and what we got was a preliminary discussion, and I think they submitted, right, they submitted a plan for a retail facility. They, as Raj just said, they could do a growing facility there too, but I think they wanna do a retail, so that's where we're at.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask if the town meeting generally has restriction of marijuana facilities in the industrial zone, would that completely stop the process in that area? What would be the next step after that, would be my question.
Well, it would stop the grow one at a hundred Hartwell and the grow one at closer to the jail, but the, but the retail one is not.
One twenty-five, or whatever it is.
I don't, did, did you get, Chris, did you talk to town council about the status of that?
Well, the town council will be in town meeting to answer those questions. One, you're saying if one passes and one doesn't, or is that what?
I just, the one that, um.
I think both, I think there's one to change the bylaw and there's one to not allow it, so.
But I think she was asking if, if, if.
If this solves their problem.
If the vote to not allow, if the vote to not allow facilities in the industrial zone passes, then what's the next step, is that what you're saying?
Right, what happens to the proposals on the table?
I, I, we, I don't know the answer.
Right, so.
I think the people that bring the article forward need to find an answer.
Do we know what order they're in at town meeting?
The bans first, the bylaws, I mean, the zoning.
Zoning is second.
Okay, so that's, that's how it should go, if you ban it completely, you'll pass over the zoning change, because now there's nothing to change.
No, no, you still have to do.
Jenny, you could probably answer that part, you would still need to change the zoning bylaw.
Well, no.
If it allow it, it would still be in our zoning bylaw.
Well, no, if it's prohibited, it's prohibited, but the zoning bylaw is still there to allow it, even though it's prohibited, we'd have to go back at another town meeting, because to change the zoning, we have to post it and have a.
And eliminate the.
Public hearing like this, so we can't just scratch a section of the zoning out. I mean, it's pretty, it would be understandable, but that's what.
But we couldn't approve an application that came before us if it's prohibited.
Right.
I mean, it's sort of like, in the, in the meantime, they can waste the time coming to us, and we can say, you can submit your application, but we can't go much further with this, because it's, can't go.
They have to meet all the rules.
The zoning and rules.
Any other comments from the board?
The only one I, I would suggest maybe, and that sort of upends the turnip card here, if you wanted to add to this, and this meeting is kind of the last spot where we can change the wording, because after, I don't know, it's the way the process goes, once you have the public hearing and you leave, now you really can't change it significantly because all these people had their input and you, you, you can't.
This is the last stop before.
Before town meeting. Did you wanna change it to be, you know, eliminated in business zone and add some sort of control or enforcement, although I guess this eliminates it, add enforcement to the bylaw that says.
This is in the industrial.
Yeah, so this would get rid of it, all right.
But it won't get rid of it in the business zone.
Correct.
You said some micro, talking of industrial.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like the, the, one of the complaints that was heard from, by me, was that the rules are written, but we don't have any faith that the rules will be followed, so I was thinking, I was thinking that if you had the opportunity right now to change the zoning, you could add in an enforcement, like if this happens, I don't know, you, you, you have to stop your operation until the, whatever, some, some investigation is made.
That's a separate, that's a separate bylaw amendment, right?
Yeah, no, it would be unless you added it here tonight, because.
No, no.
That would expand it, and we advertised a certain thing, and you kinda, you get a little wiggle room, but if you bring in something brand new.
I mean, it came up as, as a, as a concern.
But you're still allowing it in the business area, which is still on Shusbury Street, not well street.
Correct.
Except for intersection.
The corner.
Well, the corner, my property is still business zone.
I think you're in that.
My property's split, business and industrial.
Right.
So it's, you're still allowing a retail establishment, so this article that's gonna go in front isn't gonna ban it completely, it's just gonna take it out of, really further up Hartwell Street in that area which is industrial.
Yes.
It's not gonna take it away from Shusbury Street where the growing facility that's looking to go in now is going.
No, it will, because that doesn't go all the way up to that.
Right.
But that's business, isn't it?
No, the business stops, business zone stops.
I don't know what the address is, but it starts.
I think it's like three hundred feet, three hundred feet off of Shusbury Street, I think, is about where the business district ends, so those proposed units up across from the Legion Hall, or the.
No, it was.
Is that the Legion?
No, it's the one up by the solar field, isn't, isn't that what you're talking about?
The solar field is where the proposed unit for a growing facility is going.
It's past the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's.
Yeah, the, the business zone stops before the railroad tracks.
The business stops before the railroad tracks, as.
And then it's industrial again.
And then it's industrial, and up further up Hartwell is industrial.
Yep, yes. It looks like it only goes in the first property up Hartwell Street, the business zone.
So the baseball facility is in industrial zones, not a business zone?
The, the baseball facility is in the business zone, and then it stops, I don't know which property it stops at.
It's, it's right close to the line, there's a map outside there.
Central coding area.
Yeah, it's central coding or just after, I'm not sure.
So the passing of this wouldn't necessarily get back, that one.
It would impact the growing facilities that we're talking about, but not the retail.
Correct.
And the retail's not gonna admit any order.
Right.
So conceivably, somebody could decide, if, if this passed, no industrial, no further industrial zone marijuana growing facilities, right? Conceivably, somebody could find a patch of business zone contiguous to all this industrial zone and put a facility in there, defeating the purpose of the.
Yes. Well, or, or if, if the guy with the retail one doesn't want to be, wants to be growing, he's, he's okay.
Yeah, so you can't put a growing in a, in a business zone.
Sure.
Sounds like it, yes.
So if he's got enough property there, he can put.
If he closes down the field, he could put it right there.
Right, so, so it's really not stopping a growing facility, it's just limiting where it can go near us.
Unless the total ban goes into effect on the first.
Right, you have the, the general bylaw that's proposed, there's a general bylaw prohibition against all marijuana use, so there's the first one that's like, done, not in business, not in industrial, not in West Boylston.
Okay.
So there's one that's being proposed, that's.
That will be on the warrant.
Yep, there's a general, a general bylaw statement on the warrant, and then if that does not pass, then this one comes up as prohibited from, prohibited from industrial, but still allowed in business.
Let's, let's wrap this up, yeah.
Okay, I probably should, I said I wasn't gonna say something, one last thing. I kinda helped lead this petition, and let me give you my rationale, we have two petitions. One, I'm trying to protect the people of Angelbrook and Hillside, we find ourselves in an industrial area. If the ban went through, but the zoning changed, we're still protected as far as marijuana establishments, so if one passes and one doesn't, we're still protecting the people of Angelbrook, that was my rationale for putting both citizens' petitions forward.
So if the, say, suppose if the general bylaw did not pass, so you will go to the.
The industrial, that still protects Angelbrook.
What about, if the general bylaw passes, you are passing over the zoning?
Right, if, if the, no, if the ban, the complete, the ban for the entire area of West Boylston passes, then it's kind of a moot point for the industrial, but if the ban for induc, for use marijuana establishments for the entire area of West Boylston passed, but the zoning.
Fans. Some of you read this?
Doesn't pass.
I assume everybody knows this.
Pass. If, if one passed and one didn't, then we're still protecting the Angelbrook area.
But we have the zoning.
I think it's, if the first one passes, the second one doesn't matter, if the second one passes, then you're kind of only protected locally.
Right, if the first one passed, if the first one didn't pass, and the second one passed, then we're all set for Angelbrook.
Not really.
What would we have a kind of zoning bylaw?
That's right, was where the retail is, so no, we're not protected.
I, I think our main concern, and again, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but our main concern really is the cultivation area.
Yeah.
That's the cultivation.
But he can put a cultivation area, because he's got a lot of land.
But it has to be, there's not a lot of land that's in the business district. There's a, there's a map outside, you can take a look, and I got a small one here, but there's only.
Screen?
Can we do a screen?
I'll try, I love doing this.
I believe we can do it.
I got it here.
Expediently.
But this, it's only, it's only where the house lots were, at the corner of Shusbury and Hartwell, that's business, and then extends along Shusbury down to where the old shell tanks were, the building where the shell tank farm was, I don't know if you guys have been here that long.
I mean, that's where.
So that's about far. Right, so it goes up, yeah, Evolution, Revolution, whatever it is.
Yeah, Evolution is the baseball park, so he could, he could literally shut down Evolution and put up a growing facility.
Right, he's got probably four acres, I think it is, that would be in the business district.
So on four acres, you can certainly put up a growing facility as well as a retail facility and have your own little compound apart.
So it seems to me we need to train our guns on enforcement, because that's the thing that we've gotta get done, that these things are apparently gonna happen.
Well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be proposed unless they're prohibited, so your first bet is the prohibition, and if that doesn't pass, then you have to stay on top of it and make sure that things are implemented.
And so what we gotta get done is local enforcement, some sort of odor monitoring, twenty-four hour monitoring, so that we can call in, in an enforcement brigade in the event orders of religious.
Yes, and when the planning board has public hearings about the special permits for such facilities, the public will come and ask the applicant questions.
I think, you know, Phil, at this time, you may want to focus on the town meeting. For the general bylaw, you need a majority, simple majority, for the zoning bylaw, two, two third majority, you need your supporters.
So I just have root silver, Angelbrook Village, I just have one question, if at town meeting, the majority of the voters vote for either one of those two warrants, does that overturn the first vote? If that, if you get a majority vote, will that overturn?
If, if the first, if the vote, if the vote to ban marijuana establishments in town altogether passes, then they'll bypass the second one, because that's moot, there's no point in voting on that one.
Right, but I'm saying, a vote was already taken to approve the siting of these facilities, so I thought that was a done deal, okay, that it was voted on and.
No, there's been, there's been no voting on the placement of facilities, there's been a community host agreements signed with applicants at those facility, for those mutations, but there has been no hearing by the planning board on those facilities, they have not come forward to us yet.
Well, there was a vote to ban it, and that was put down, right?
At town meeting.
There was a vote at town meeting to ban it, and that was put down, then there was a vote for the bylaw that was passed, and that's what we're working with now. And so if this, this, if the, the first one, the ban, were to go up again, and it pass, passes, and that, then, then nothing, then everything would be banned, right?
So that's a loud protest, even though if they won, they could, we could do it again, we can overturn that. We can overturn, even though it was voted down.
So those are all the, can I, those are all the questions, the town council will be there during the town meeting, so those are all the questions for the town councils, during that time, you know, you can ask them. So to answer your questions, you know, the town said during the host agreement, yes, yes, we are, we want your business in the town, we are allowing your business in this town, that's what the host agreement is for.
Right.
So with that, you know, with the piece of paper, they take it to the state, with all other document, required document, they will get the state approval, Cannabis Control Commission approval, and then they will come back to the planning board with a site plan review. The day the planning board approves the site plan review, then that is the day, you know, they can have a business here, until then, you know, nothing is there. That's my understanding, maybe Chris can.
No, I, I just, in regards to the, planning board can say what they want, but I don't think they should tell the residents, because you're saying what you think, if one passes and one doesn't.
Well, it's the intent.
We'll let the town council do that, yeah, it's legal.
I think we should let, I don't think there should be, I guess there should be a disclaimer that, because it's a resident's petition, the town can't use town funds to, to make the article, so town council at town meeting will answer questions, but the planning board, I guess, can say what they want, but they should be kind of just telling you that what they say might not be one hundred percent correct, I mean, it's up to you folks, but I don't know if you agree or disagree with that, but you're saying what you think.
It's what we believe, but it might not be the law.
What you believe, it might not be the law.
That's right.
The attorney general, after a town meeting, the attorney general has to approve this, all warrant articles, so.
Actually, can I bring up one other?
So it's not, so it's not necessarily.
What is the point about this? I really do wanna wrap this up.
I just wanted to put the point of.
We don't know, we don't know what will happen.
That's the zoning that applies, like when they put in their application, that date is the date of the zoning that applies to their application.
Okay, hold on, I wanna, let's explain, let's, Raj, can you explain that map?
This is, this is the zoning map in the area that we're talking about, like Angelbrook is like over here.
Okay.
And here's the train track.
Yeah.
It's Shusbury Street, it's Hartwell Street, and it's really, and the baseball fields are right here.
Yeah.
Like the Legion is up here, or whatever it is. Um, so it's only like, I think, whether it's three hundred feet or a hundred feet.
I think it's a three hundred foot.
So the red is the business.
Yeah, the red is the business zone, and all the pink is the industrial. So, you, you know, it starts before the train track, I think that there's, whatever, the press place with the new gym, I don't know if that's, that's here or here.
I don't know, but that's that's here or here, but that's about where it stops. And then up here, there's the the plumbing, the.
Plumbers is number two right there, below you, oh, below you.
The south side of the intersection.
Oh, there's another one over here.
South, south.
That's another, that's a house over there.
That's a house, okay.
On the left side.
Number two down below you, that's the plumbers union.
Oh, yeah, this one.
This is the plumbers union.
On island.
This is my property here, and this is my property, these two are my properties.
Right, and then a hundred, I think, is this one, a hundred Hartwell. There's the machine shop, there's a hundred Hartwell over here. I mean, everybody oriented to what we're looking at.
Right.
Okay. That's all, I mean, it, so so it doesn't go all the way down to the other facility, it doesn't go even to the entrance to Angelbrook, which I think is just past the train, or just in front of the train tracks here.
Right.
Yeah, that's, you can see at the very bottom, that's the driveway.
Okay, and just just to get you oriented in what the the business district is.
Okay, so the prohibition would, prohibition's intent is to prohibit it throughout the town. The zoning article is to prohibit it only in the pink areas, not the red areas there. And so you get some buffer from Briarwood and Hillside Village, so.
No, Briarwood's way down.
I'm sorry, not Briarwood.
And Angelbrook.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming.
Last comments.
Last, any last comments?
Oh, can I do that?
What do you want to make?
Go ahead.
All right, there's one other thing that I I'm not sure of, and this is a town council question a hundred percent. It's when, what zoning applies to the application? So like if they've already put in their application, they've got a permit, you can't change the zoning on them then, you know? Like you can't, you know, you can't change the rules they're playing by after they've gotten, you know, rule, you know, the authorization to go. So I don't know where any of these places are in their process. If they haven't started, the new zoning applies. If they're halfway through it, I don't know what, where the zoning rules apply, you know? Like if we could change them, but they might have already.
That's a question to town council.
Yeah, that's a town, that's a hundred percent a town council one, but that's another one we gotta ask them.
I just.
One more thing, yeah.
I just wanted to clear, say if nothing passes, it stays as it currently is. Who, who said, was it the town selectmen that signed the host agreement that approved the facilities to go into these places? Or is it the zoning, the planning board who said, yes, they can site there?
The community host, the community host agreement is just that, agreement between the applicant and the town describing various uh attributes of what's gonna happen. Is there any additional monies requested from the applicant, et cetera? The approval of the site, the building attributes, exactly what goes on there is the planning board's job to approve that particular building.
On the site that was agreed to in the host agreement, so it doesn't come to us until after the host agreement.
And in your decision making, would you ever think about, oh, that was just said here?
Absolutely, one hundred percent, yes.
That there would be something cited there, maybe the answer would be no?
We.
The hard part, the hard part there is, it's a special permit. So in that stuff, special permit, someone read the standard, that they have to show us that they're not gonna have any odors. So they're gonna come in with a plan, I'm sure, whoever it is, and their plan is gonna say, this isn't, this is gonna contain all the odors within this building, assuming they do it. They will propose it, and they'll say that it is the way, we will hire our town's engineer or reviewer for the planning board, who will review it and say, yeah, I think they need to tweak it here, but generally it's okay. And at that point, that's what the planning board bases its decision on and their findings. So it would be something, it's not as though we can say, well, there's no way you're gonna take care of the odors, so we're never gonna approve it. If they propose something that's been approved and reviewed by a professional, another professional, then based on those recommendations, then the planning board will then follow through and do our, make our decision.
Okay.
So add on one of the things, you know, even if we disapprove the site plan review, they can still go to the court.
Right.
Oh, always.
Sure.
Who who can go to court?
Go to court.
The applicant can sue us.
It can, they can appeal things to court as well, if if the planning board denies something.
Unreasonable.
Always happens.
Well, it's always possible, not always happens.
Right, yeah.
Hasn't happened.
It's they're within their rights to do it, right.
But we could end up with three or four cultivating sites around us, then if people.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Dump everybody right by us.
Well, that wasn't the intent, I mean, it's.
Well, I mean, it is, it is the industrial zone, you can have warehousing facilities there, you know, yeah.
We knew when we bought that it was an industrial area.
Okay, any other, any other questions from the board or comments?
No, well, is this, is everybody happy with this language, it's your, or it's the.
I guess it's what it is, I don't think the language is, this is the language.
Well, they can change it right now, and that's and that's all we can do.
I'm not sure that's true.
Well, they could change it a little, but I mean, it says what they wanted to say, and it says what is intended, so let's.
So this is the wording that's gonna be on the town.
And then, do you wanna ask them to present at town meeting?
The citizens, yes. You folks will.
Someone's gonna have, someone's gonna have to be ready to do a presentation at town meeting to support that.
Yeah, I was told that I have to present at the town meeting.
Okay.
And if you get all of Angelbrook and and both of the places there, you're gonna own town meeting, so it doesn't even matter.
If we change it to to business and industrial, basically you have two votes for the same same article.
Well, we can't, that expands it, that would expand it too much from running post as a public hearing.
Can I bring that up, and I wanna talk about that one then? If they want to, could we say industrial zone and business at this intersection, and the business zone at this intersection?
Can't spot zone.
I don't think, yeah, you can't, yeah.
Well, not spot zoning, I'm just editing their words. It's not spot zoning, cause we're not zoning, it's their concern.
It's, but they're, but they're proposing a zoning amendment.
Right, they're proposing a zoning amendment, this is expanding it a little bit, but it's not expanding it everywhere in town. So it would still be allowed in a whole bunch of places in town.
Because I think there was a misunderstanding that this business zone wasn't a business zone, it was all the industrial zone. So the intent when they wrote it was to cover their whole area. That's the only reason why I would say we could do that right now, but.
Well, but the the hard part there is, is I don't know for sure, and it's a legal question, and it won't be decided until the attorney general says, it passed, but I'm throwing it out because your public hearing didn't say anything about this, and I don't know that they.
Let's make the public hearing say something about this.
I don't think it's worth, it's worth the chance for them to change it right now.
Well, now the public hearing says something about that.
No, but I mean, that's, I know it says it now, but the posting.
Oh, the posting.
Public hearing posting did not say anything about changing the use in a business district, any business.
Well, that's why I wouldn't let it be in all the business districts.
People might have wanted to show up.
And the only, the only thing is that Fuller, who's not here tonight, would, might have read it and said, oh, well, I don't have anything to worry about, I'm okay. That's the only reason that that could get.
Yeah, but you are targeting a one location, right?
Well, just because there was a misunderstanding, the reason is because there was a misunderstanding that the business zone existed there.
Well, think about it, if we were to change it, and we were to change this even though it wasn't advertised, do you think someone would complain?
Yeah.
Yes.
Only one person.
He would be complaining.
Do you think that's enough?
And and he is rightly so, he should. So that's why I would not recommend changing it.
All right, I think it's a.
I I don't think I can change it, or anybody can change it, because I was told when I was originally put together, put this together, I was looking for a special town meeting, and it encompassed a lot more. I was told that the petition, the uh, anything that that shows up at the town meeting had to be put together forty-five days prior to the town meeting. So we don't have forty-five days to change the language, so I don't think we can change it, based on what I've been told.
Yes.
I think that's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, and that's, we can do minor, like I'm saying, we can do the minor stuff, like whether it's grammatical or minor tweaks, but not that.
Okay.
Okay, if they wanted to go to ban.
I I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All, all in favor?
I.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
My uh, grandson's thinking about.
Oh, wonderful.
Isn't there an orientation consensus?
I'm sure there's a, we've got, we've got all kinds of open houses and things like that, absolutely. I always know because then we're not allowed to park in our parking garage.
You should have gone. It was in the package today.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna have a plane fly over and drop leaflets.
Thank you for coming tonight, always entertaining.
No, it's back, let's move him up first, is he first, he is first.
Can we take a little recess?
He's number one.
Just park anywhere.
No, no.
Park anywhere in the front edge.
A new senior center, you can park plenty of them.
What's in town meeting?
Town meeting, oh, I'm sorry, 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 town.
You're saying you're gonna tell me.
I will ask them to put more of, more of.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get, which is the. Gonna get, drive the bus, pick up everybody.
Oh, this is, I'm already tired for the uh. I'm very tired.
May twentieth.
May twentieth, thank you.
It says there, right?
Thank you much.
You're welcome. So it's on the top of that notice. Is he running for election out there, or what?
Who? Mark, Mark is running for the moderator, I guess.
Yeah, what is he doing, is he?
No, he's not.
He's running for election or something.
Change the order of this.
What's next?
What's it, let's talk to the building inspector.
We've got a lot of citizen comments, building inspector's next.
Building inspector.
I know, but maybe take it Ari first.
Building inspector.
Cause the building inspector will take longer.
Oh, this is, oh, okay.
It's town paid?
I forgot, okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, we're rich. We'll raise the taxes on your property only.
Come up together.
Let's go to Ari first, and then we'll.
You can see what's going on too.
And then we'll, then we'll take care of you. Come on up. So, we figured we'd clear up in person what was needed for the as-built plan, for find, the new finders, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Mark, yes?
I'm looking to other members of the board to say exactly what was missing from those plans. I know it was a certification.
I don't know, did we write down?
It's stamped, it's stamped by an engineer, it doesn't say it's a certified as-built.
That's right.
No, I.
That's right.
I talked to, what's his name?
Thank you.
Was the engineers on it, uh?
Melanie.
Who signed it? Yeah, we, there's an approval that's posted.
I talked to Patrick today, and and I asked him, I said, um, he said he was contracted to more make a drawing of what was there now. Well, what was there now, not, and he said one of the problems is that all the work from the project hasn't been completed, so it's not really an as-built of the project.
You wanted an as-built of the property, which is what you said that you wanted me to do.
So it's quite literally.
This is actually literally an as-built of what is there right now.
Right, and that's not.
The thing that, the the plans that you proposed thirteen years ago to Kevin McCormick.
Well, he proposed was, but okay.
Is that what he proposed to you, right, he did, I I was giving you, what I was asked to give you was an as-built of what is there right now.
No, we're looking for an as-built for, we had a site plan review submitted, whatever it was, by, so thirteen years ago. So we've been waiting patiently to have that work finished.
So the site plan review was from Kevin McCormick?
From, it's that site, yes.
Right, so that was from Kevin McCormick, who's the previous owner, not myself.
Outstanding site plan, who's the, you're the owner of the property or the leasing?
The owner of the property is Gary Orsiani.
So he was the one that let Mr. McCormick be his representative, there was some, this, some piece of paper saying that under the site plan review, he's proposing this to make changes on Mr. Orsiani's property.
But that was thirteen years ago, is my question, I'm taking this property over, this is an as-built. We have, does it need it handicapped, you know, we have plenty of parking, this is how the parking lot is, which has not changed since before the proposed one from Kevin McCormick. So my question to you is, what do you need me to do, because I don't, I shouldn't change.
The approval that was there, it's, is the, I I don't know, it's on the town website, but there's a, an approval letter that was issued to finders. It said, they proposed a plan, we said that's okay, build that, they started doing the construction, but never finished it.
Okay, I understand where you're coming from.
No, that's, so that's where it is.
But I'm not fine.
We're not done, it's.
I'm Ari's.
Right, but we're not done with, the site needs to be in compliance by being completed.
The drains and the.
If it's completed, if it's completed.
Completely completed, okay, so.
So if everything is completed, then it's completed.
Okay.
He said that and.
So then all you need them to do is, what we're looking for is, it's an, right now you've got an existing conditions plan, not an as-built plan.
Okay.
The as-built plan is a review of what was proposed, and then how that was built, or if there were differences from what was built to what was proposed. So that's the other thing that wasn't submitted, is a certification from the engineer saying, this is what was proposed, this is what wasn't built, and why, or, yeah, we twisted this, and it was supposed to be perpendicular parking, but it's now angular parking, which could be fine, or it could be a problem if he doesn't have the number of parking spaces that were originally proposed. Or if he had extra ones, then what weren't needed for the zoning, like, cause what we do, we do it all based on site plan review.
I agree with that, I I hear what you're saying, I just wanna know why there was that proposal thirteen years ago that.
Never got.
Why was it, yeah, why, why should I have been?
He probably wanted to do some construction.
It was never changed, it was never, you know what I mean, I didn't.
It's never been completed.
Yeah, I'm not finders, I'm Ari's, so I just, you know, this is how I'm leasing the place, do you understand?
Over the, three years ago, there was a meetings of the building permitting boards, and it was one of those things where the owner at the time was in bankruptcy, so they're like, well, let's give it time when it changes hands, that's when we'll bring everything into compliance.
That was three years ago.
That's what was discussed three years ago, and it still has not been, right, but it, it's just been waiting.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking you, like, why? So they proposed to do this to the parking lot, did you, is, my question is, is the town ask, was asking Kevin to do this to the parking lot?
No, he wanted to do something.
So that's what I'm saying, so he proposed to you, to the town, that he wanted to change the parking situation.
Well, no, he wanted to do something, we don't know what he wanted to do. He might, he probably wanted to change the building, add a, do an addition or something.
He changed the interior.
Okay, so how, why does that impact what I'm doing now with the restaurant? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, it's probably, it could be.
Cause he didn't finish.
He didn't finish, right, but he's chapter seven gone.
Right, but the issue is, is he built something in his, in the building, and it required a certain amount of parking and access. Based on what he put inside that building and built and was using for thirteen years, he then was supposed to do all this other work on the outside that never got done. So he never got a final permit from the planning board saying everything was okay.
I, again, I'm gonna ask you again, though, I'm just saying.
What don't, what don't you understand?
We're not gonna get that from him.
What don't you understand, the idea?
I'm not, I wasn't here.
But the building, the building is still there.
The building is still there, but we're not getting a, we're not getting an as-built from him, he's gone.
Right.
Right.
That's, that part is true.
Yeah, but there's still, there's something, like, what if he decided to double the size of the building, double the size of the building, but that also triggered, doubled the parking or something? And he never did that part, I mean, it's sort of like, he he said I wanna do a bunch of things.
But at the same time, like, how does the town allow that, and then have a building still operate, a restaurant still operate, and then they go into chapter seven, and now they're, like, I don't, I wasn't here for that, do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, because.
I guess, you, you, you feel like this should not be your problem, I understand.
Exactly, I wasn't, you know, and I've already spent money on having an engineer come out and look at the parking lot, put down the parking spaces and things like that, something that hasn't been addressed in so many years that now I have to. And I don't know the history.
Well, you don't have to, Orsiani is the owner, and they're the responsible party.
So what, what else do we want, besides a a variant of that plan?
Who did the first one?
Well, I'm not sure.
Thompson and Liston.
They did?
Yes, they did, that's why I went through them again, because it just makes, it makes sense.
They have, have to work on.
But, so when you talk to them, what, they said they gave you an existing conditions plan, or did?
They asked them for an as-built, which is of the parking lot as it is, as it stands right now.
Okay, it's an, it's an as-built site plan, for the whole thing, for the building, for the, yes. So that's, so he gave you a plan of existing conditions plan?
Yes. Yep.
Updated plan, yeah, site is a, to view the. Updated plan, yeah. Site visit to view the existing condi-, conditions of the parking lot and entrance for taking several measurements. For updating the plan with findings, for plotting the plan and making copies for the client. This is my receipt.
That's your bill probably, yeah. So what-
So this is what he has-
In the site plan review, there's a couple of standards that say you need to, to get it all finished and signed off is, submit an as-built plan that shows everything that was agreed upon between the planning board and the proponent were completed. So that's a plan.
So the planning board from, from thirteen years ago is right here talking about, but I, I-
The planning board is changing.
Well, he's got the drawing. It's the drawing that they generated. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Right, right, okay. So what, they completed the part when they put the drainage in and things like that?
Well, the, he had a project that he was gonna do, which is, I don't even know what was on it.
He did.
Drainage, maybe change the building, maybe change the parking lot, do something else, do some-
Yeah, the building. I'm, my thing was, is, was the parking lot, because they wanna take out spots, put islands in and things like that, trees and stuff.
Yeah, that was probably, they supposed to. I mean, that's, that's what we ask for people to do in parking lots when they redoing them, I guess.
And that, well, and that's what the zoning required at the time and still requires.
So what I, I mean, would it be adequate to just tell Patrick, go do a real as-built, look at the plan, look at what you got? And just write the letter that says, this is done, this is done, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't. But we have enough parking spaces, they're crooked, but they're not straight. I, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what differences there are.
Yes.
But he just has to write his letter that says-
That's what we, that's what we said.
It's actually like eight months compliance. Okay, that's all, yeah, okay, that's all right.
Yeah, do whatever he can do to get it in, in compliance and then-
There's a breakthrough here.
I do, I do.
And the only thing that might happen is you have to come to us and, when he says, whatever, there was supposed to be eighty spaces and there's seventy-five. Or what's the trigger? The delta? Whatever the delta is.
No, no, but there's no trigg-, it's an existing site plan review, so it's not like they're gonna have to do an amendment.
Oh, that's, this is what it'll be. If the requirement is seventy-five spaces, they were planning ninety, but they only came up with seventy-nine. He's gotta come in and say, the as-built says, we didn't make the ninety spaces we wanted to, but we made more than required. Can we consider that an, a, a, an okay change?
The issue that might come up is if there's not gonna be enough parking spaces for the square foot that you wanna use.
Square foot is a table.
It's, it's tables, yeah.
Thirteen years ago that made this-
My memory's not very-
See, and I don't remember, but-
I, I'm just-
That's probably what it was.
He opened, he opened up the entryway, widened that access and then he put on the-
He covered the deck or something?
Yeah, he put on, uh, where the smoking room was, there was some other thing that was going on there. And then he did the addition, there's a step down, I think, inside.
So did he add the capacity inside?
Yeah.
Yes, and that's why that-
It doesn't, the front porch, used to be a front porch and then he closed the whole thing and added seat tuck down.
Right.
That's what you said.
The handicap ramp that goes up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it used to, it used to be a step down to that front porch.
Okay, the front, okay. So probably the front porch, adding all those tables triggered an increase in parking and that's why he was doing stuff in the parking lot. I mean, that's, I, I don't actually know what he did or anything, but this is what I'm guessing. Cause he, he wouldn't, they wouldn't-
I completely understand, I just don't understand why the two go hand in hand. Like, if you're gonna allow someone to put an addition on a restaurant and add more patrons, why wouldn't you have them follow through with, do you know what I'm saying?
We kept on asking him.
That's a very good question.
And that's not-
That's an exact question. I've been asking that same question.
Exactly.
That purchased this restaurant and now I am like-
I, yes.
And so did you hear all the-
Like, are you kidding?
And all the people that were here just a little while ago saying, we should do this and should do this and you have a requirement?
Right.
Someone came in and said, this is what we're proposing, the planning board said, oh, that looks like it will work. You can build that. We gave them the permit. They only built portions of it, so they didn't complete it all. And there was no enforcement. We didn't have this building inspector. We had four other building inspectors before this that didn't wanna do enforcement.
I wasn't here either.
You know, you asked me to, you know, you asked me to put a toilet in a restaurant, cause I need a toilet in a restaurant. Like, it has to be there, like, like the follow through.
Yeah, but you, you, it's like if you have a-
I, I'm trying to follow through on everything that you, that we're asking, you're asking us.
That, that thirteen years ago, they said they wanted-
Know exactly what she needs.
Because I want my licenses and when I can open, I wanna be able to be fine and ready to open. I don't want any more surprises, I, you know?
Well, I think, as far as what I know is that we need to get an as-built, cause we don't, I don't even remember. I don't remember what's missing and what's been done. I remember there's something in the parking lot, there was something about setbacks.
Actually, I guess, then that's Patrick.
The major part of it was done. The widening, the drainage was done. Those two, I brought those in the book, the last-
Patrick's at that, when I'm talking to them.
Yes, that's, the major things were done. They had actually proposed to put the, the handicap spots up against Orsiani's building, which, to me.
Across the street, yeah.
Yeah, like, doesn't make any sense because the entrance to the restaurant is where we actually have, that's what's on these. Do you know what I'm saying? We talked about this last-
And that's, and that's fine, if you can just get something, if you, if you relocated handicap, just talk to the fire chief and as long as he says it's fine, we're fine with that. And that's a change, and that's what, let's say, Andrew Liston or whoever, Patrick-
Patrick.
Says, yeah, we relocated the handicap. We say, oh, that's not really our, we, we look at it, but it's the building inspe-, or the, uh, fire chief. For them to say, yes, it's okay or no, it's not. There used to be a fire lane in front, which is, I think, why they were located over there. Cause he wanted, the old fire chief wanted a fire lane along the building.
Yes, which there is one. But that's also my question, is it being inspected every year by the fire department?
You just gotta submit a drawing that specifies that it was done.
Yeah, but Patrick knows what to do.
What those are, yeah.
To, to, I would go to Patrick and say, I'm trying to close out this site plan review.
She went to Patrick.
Yeah, but, but you went to Patrick and for some reason he only gave that drawing.
Well, that's, yeah.
I mean, you say, Patrick, no, we wanna complete this site plan review, so you know you have to write a letter that says we were a hundred percent in compliance with the project's site plan. Or, here's the as-built and we're not a hundred percent in compliance, here's the differences, here's why we should still be okay. I mean, yes.
And that's really where we're going.
So it's a separate letter that details it?
Well, no, I'll go there tomorrow.
It's a plan, it's a plan and a letter.
I just need to know.
How is the, I, as-built plan that we want different from that plan?
There's a lot of-
It has a stamp on it.
It doesn't say what's different from the original plan.
Okay, so the plan-
It's got a, it's got a stamp, but it's not-
It's like a, um-
It's a good drawing, it's just not-
I was gonna say, do we have one that we can give her an example of what it looks like for real?
So does the drawing have to be-
Is that the original?
The-
Now, this is the as-built for one of the things we're gonna be talking about. Solar field.
Okay.
There you go, good.
We're gonna call you Olba. Okay, where's the, oh, that?
Wait, this is the as-built?
The plan says it's an, it's an as-built plan and the stamp, it's the same stamp that it goes on it. But, but, but because it says that it's an as-built, that stamp is accepting liability for the changes. So, and, and he's gonna prepare it a little differently as well.
It just says-
Yeah, no, he's, he's probably ninety percent done.
Start this, but you're gonna finish it and we're gonna be grateful to you for getting this off of our list.
Cause this has been a nightmare for thirteen years.
Yeah.
You can take a picture.
Yes.
You want, you already want a picture of that?
Is that Thompson Liston?
Yes.
It's like, it's like, you know, buying a house and then you find out that, oh, shoot, there's a crack in my foundation or something.
And I've heard you had a lot of things that came back and bit you with them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
The parking lot, honestly, I would like to know, but I just, I just want the licenses and, yeah.
Yep.
Well, we want you to be successful, we just make sure it's done.
Take a picture of the-
No, I, I can see it.
And, and Thompson, Mr. Chick, no, I mean, is a, do we have the approval? Can we send her a copy of the approval? Cause there's an original approval letter and like the last two standards say exactly what needs to be done.
And it can say, okay, this yes, this yes, this yes, this not.
He should have a version.
So, when Kevin proposes these things to you, those are the things that you're going back, Kevin's gonna propose them to you, what has to be done.
Is that, is it in the minutes?
Or what wasn't?
Kevin, Kevin proposed something that the planning board approved, so it was in a, we all agreed upon this drawing that was gonna be built.
Right.
For him to be able to bu-, do the expansion and enlargement of what he was proposing, opening up the entryway, doing the drainage, was required. He was gonna do the whole package.
Okay, but as long as I'm, so I'm gonna look at the name on parking spots, I mean, I don't, like, for you guys, would I have to go? I, I just have to have adequate parking, correct? And then the fire chief has to-
According to the zoning, yes.
Right, according to the zoning and then according to-
Which is how many tables you have. It's like number spaces per tables and things like that.
Do we know that number? And when would we know that number? You know the number all the time, you know the number.
Oh, my gosh. Are you off the top of your head?
Well, no, we don't know how many square feet in it, in it. If she's got a bar, there are seats at a bar, if you can have tables. And if there are tables outside.
When would we know if the number of spaces that are currently there is adequate?
Well, when would we usually have it?
When a certified plan comes in, certification says, we were, we proposed, the, the plan proposed eighty-five spaces. We didn't get eighty-five, we got eighty-four, but all that were required were seventy-six. So that engineer is gonna take the liability in this by stamping.
The original site plan that was proposed was the add-on from Kevin adding on to the building is my question? So he was supposed to add parking thirteen years ago?
Well, that's why I don't-
Is my question, I don't understand that part.
I don't know. I don't, no, well, no, it was, whatever he was proposing to do thirteen years ago with the size and the area. It required a certain amount of parking and he was amending or changing the parking. I don't know whether he was just gonna pave what he had already. Or whether he was needing to enlarge it, which I didn't think he had enough room for that. But-
So he, okay, I'm just trying to get to it, like-
I mean, it, like, he came as a business and said, I wanna, I'm, I have a great business here, but I want more seats so I can make more money and do more things. And we said, okay.
So I'm coming in there now, I don't know when it's gonna be for business. Do I need to know if I had to, do you, do you understand?
No, you're kinda, well, unfortunately for you, you're kinda stuck with the building that you got.
No, the building I have, absolutely, absolutely.
So that's his, that has as much square footage as-
Which wasn't changed from when he added on to the building, you know, thirteen years ago.
But maybe it should have.
It was not changed and maybe it should have, but there's never been a problem in those past thirteen years.
Are you kidding me? You've seen the parking in there.
I know, I worked there.
Yeah, you tried to park there.
But I'm just saying, hey, listen, I got front row.
Right, but, but no, for the last, for the last thirteen years, every year when his license gets brought up, look back in the tapes of the selectmen's meetings.
The planning board is requested to-
Finish this every year.
On, are there any of these permits that have issues with the planning board? And for the last, I'd say, ten years at least, twelve years, planning board has said, okay, finders pub haven't completed site plan review. It goes to the selectmen's meeting, they say, that's a building inspector issue, that's a planning board issue, we're not dealing with, we're issuing.
It's, that's correct.
But how is that right? How is that fair?
I like your attitude. You should run for a board.
There you go. It's totally ridiculous, because I should not thirteen years later have to deal with this.
I agree.
Because I'm gonna pull out and say-
Yeah.
And then you could push it to Orsiani, I mean, if you-
I don't wanna push it to him. He's been a great man.
Cause it'll take forever.
You wanna get it done, like I said.
I just wanna be out of the-
You're gonna, you're gonna fix a problem.
I wanna be out of what was finders. I'm not finders. I wanna move forward. I want my licenses. I wanna get this business open.
And they said, really, won't give you your licenses because of this?
Because of this. Well, that I just, I've been approved for everything, but this has to just say, okay, yeah.
It's okay.
Oh, all right, so now they're doing it.
Now, yeah. So you know what you need to do?
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, right.
Perfect.
That's awesome. Thank you for, thank you for taking this off of our list.
Future, like, gosh, we're trying to have new people coming in.
George is here, we're gonna try to address any outstanding stuff.
When's, when's the grand opening?
Right.
I don't know yet. I, I, this is like, there's so many things that I like that I've really turned-
She's, she's gonna come back and bring the thing and we're gonna be like, okay, great. And afterwards, we'll reconvene there and celebrate, right?
Planning board field trip.
That's right. Right, well, yeah, we have to, well, let's see it in person, right?
Okay, so you need me for anything? He says porch. Pretty sure we're just gonna tear that off.
Yeah, the, yeah, okay. That was my only issue when we went for the license and last time.
No, but it's, I already talked to you about that. It's condemned to the dead of the law.
Porch got condemned?
Pretty sure we're just ripping it off.
In the front?
It's a smoking porch on the side.
On the side.
What's, what's bad about it?
Which, it's more like what's good about it.
He probably shouldn't go out there anymore.
No, it's part of the building, isn't it?
No, the joists are separated from the, from the, uh, from the ban boards by about six inches.
Yikes.
Ouch.
So I couldn't-
The only thing that's holding that floor on there are, is the tips of the nails that they use on here. I, I, I went there, I looked at that and I said, nope, that it closes up.
Wow, wow.
Because if, if you had six or seven people there jumping, they'd go right through it. Guaranteed, they'd go right through it.
Jumping is-
Yeah, they don't-
Doesn't that hold the-
Yeah, no.
It's like the roof goes over.
Comes down on some posts, but it's the deck itself.
Okay, so it's not, the roof isn't sagging because of-
Uh, it, that might be, but I, I was more concerned about the deck.
Just get the restaurant open, that's all I-
I thought it was just sort of like a room with a window.
Oh, the deck.
Excellent.
If there's any questions, I mean, he's done it on other ones. For what? No, when you're, right, when you send something in, it's actually easier if they can email it than we'd be able to look at electronically and move it a little faster.
Okay, all right, email them. Do they, he has your email address?
Patrick has mine, but he can send it to the- He's got that too, he's got that too.
Then all of us get it.
Yeah, perfect.
So you have one copy, it goes into the mail, it'll go to Melanie and then we'll all be able to look at it before the meeting a lot easier.
Excellent.
Should be easy.
Thank you.
Quick question. Do you know when the other restaurants go from, they're doing a lot of work.
Which one?
Are you a neighbor?
Oh, keepers? They've been doing work since the day they bought it.
Yeah. Do you know one day I would want to know?
No idea, honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything is hurry up and wait. Uh, I have no idea. They're still over there every day.
Yeah.
I haven't been inside there.
Have they changed the name again?
What is it now?
They changed it from keepers to something else.
Oh, black and white, she, she's over there.
Oh, the black and white people. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just don't know what she's calling it. I haven't seen her.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
George, you're up next.
George, we wanna see that one, don't we?
Yeah, it was-
Yeah, good luck.
Or is that the?
Well, I'm gonna go through the order first.
Oh, alright.
Because this has been. This is a very unpleasant experience trying to get all this stuff going, because this is. This has been quite a mess, and I would like to see that we.
Don't ever do this again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I did a lot of drive-bys, I went and looked at a lot of these places, a lot of things have changed. From the original, and, uh, some of this stuff, you know, different owners, I mean, it, 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 it was not fun going through all this stuff. I. Tried very hard to get everything that was on this list at least looked at. And at least, uh, dated as much as I could. And I have the sheet here that I got from you, so I'll go down from the top down.
Let's do it.
And hopefully, after I go through this, uh, you can give me another list.
A better list?
A better list of what we settled out and then work with that, and then.
That sounds great.
Um, I will go through it and I will check all these things as I can.
Okay, good.
So let's start at the top, seventy-six West Boylston Flag RV. Uh, this. Has been a thorn in my side, Flag RV from day one. Uh, they are not as cooperative, I guess you can say, that I would like to see them be.
As they are with us.
As they are with you.
That's right.
Um, I have found that they have done everything they should have done with the building. Uh, the structure, uh, it says you need a drainage changes on this, and I don't understand what that was.
They came in with a plan, when they did the site plan review, they came in last summer, I think it was, and said, we're doing the site plan review. Um, we approved it based on their engineer saying that it met the DEP stormwater standards, so as our, in our approval, we said. Just submit us the documentation, use the engineer's certify that it meets that, we're okay with it. Well, when the engineer really looked at the information, turns out it didn't meet the stormwater standards and they had to add a catch basin, I think. And a infiltration trench, which they were gonna do, and that, and it's fine.
So they, so they just, you just need a, a site plan review from them.
We need a site plan review and we need to be notified when the work is gonna occur, if it hasn't already, I mean, it's one of those.
So, uh, I did not, I have never seen what, what the work was required to be done there. Now, is this, the DPW have this information? Did you go?
No, no, we, well, we sent, I'm pretty sure we sent a copy to you and to the others with the current plan.
I, well, if it was sent to me personally, I would have done it by now, if it had been done to anyone before me.
No, this one was more recent, wasn't it? Was it, was it this last summer, was it?
What are we, which one are we doing?
Yeah, the flag. Did we only get one plan?
I know, not too long ago, we got the one plan from them.
So that might, we may have only gotten one plan.
So I don't have any information on that, so.
Can we Xerox the?
The what?
The plan area.
I wanna, I wanna know what I'm looking for, basically.
It is, it's huge.
Well, just tell me where, just give me access to it, that's all, I just, I can look at it.
Yeah, if we can give, yeah.
Just so I know that when I go over there, I can say, okay, that turtle wasn't there before.
Right.
Yep.
Alright.
And so, and then they're gonna be done, w- once they put that drainage and stuff in, then we need to try to get them to do the site plan certification.
Sure, right, and then I can, I can move that, I can move that along once I know what I'm, what I'm looking for.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, so this will be the first one on the list of the new things I gotta look into.
No, before then, there is one last thing.
Yeah.
Can I?
Yeah.
So, today, you know, it's, I have been saying this, U-Haul truck. Every single day.
Okay.
Ever seeing U-Haul trucks every single day.
I let, let.
So there are two U-Haul trucks, four U-Haul trucks, four trailer.
I'm gonna get to that, I'm gonna get to that, yeah, let me get through the.
That's, that need to be taken care of.
Let's get, let's go through the list.
That's further down the list.
Let's go down the list, I, I promise you I'll get to that.
Run the top, first one.
I'm on number two, uh, number three, we just did number three.
Oh.
So I'm gonna, when we get, I promise you I'll talk about the U-Haul. Alright, ninety-nine Hartwell.
On, on Flag, do we have their engineer's contact information? That might be useful.
Yeah, I'm sure I have everything.
Yeah.
Do you want that?
No.
No, I don't need that, I just, I just, I just want the.
I just think that he, their engineers better to talk to than the Flag people, because, I mean, he'll.
Anyone's easier to talk to than the Flag people.
I mean, just because he'll be able to tell you what's going on with the project.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, if anybody, well, you should open that before.
I don't disagree.
And I'm, I don't mind him saying, cause every time I go there, I gotta, I.
Let's be friendly.
Okay, let's move on, I am friendly, I like the guy, he's alright.
Okay, so you know him?
Yeah, I've already met him, all these, they're great people. Alright, number four, ninety-nine Hartwell Street. Uh, D'Verdi Commercial Stores, there's nothing with D'Verdi anywhere on any signs, any billboards or anything, there's UPS out back.
UPS is the back, doesn't D'Verdi still own it, or did he, did he sell it?
Well, when you say D'Verdi Commercial Stores, where am I looking for?
That building.
I'm looking for a storage thing.
Ninety-nine Annapolis.
And that's, and that's where I went, and there's.
He leases out property.
There was nothing in there that says D'Verdi Commercial Storage.
Oh, I think that's kind of the problem, cause when they first came in, the whole project was just to get UPS in the back and they didn't really know what they were gonna do in the front. And they did all, that was the drainage problem one?
There was drainage on the front that then drained over to Steve Migridisian's property with the detention.
Yeah, but even underneath and back, cause the water table was so high, they did their drainage second time.
Yeah, I think we're okay with the post.
No, it's okay now.
Postal Service or whatever the FedEx, UPS.
UPS.
So, they came in to do the work in the back to have a building change for that.
And it looked, when I was there without, I have no, no.
In the back looked good.
The back looked good, everything looked good on the property.
The front was what changed?
Yeah.
The front had nothing to do with their project.
They proposed something.
The proposal had nothing, no changes anywhere except in the back, and the front was just a front door for, I don't know, for years.
Just a seatable doorway.
Paved it, and they put in four bays and the garages, and we were looking at this like, saying, what, what is going on? You know, so if you look at drawings, they don't look like what that project is.
Well, I, I couldn't find anything in there that I had no idea what was, what I was looking for when I went there.
We, we have the same thoughts, I think he's come in and said, he'll, he's doing a, a business center or something like that, but.
Well, it's.
Industrial condos.
Industrial Park, he's, for contractors, just contractor garages is what he, so that's what's there.
So, what, what, what you have is a plan right now, you're looking, again, as, as built of it, the same thing as we're talking about with her.
This is the same. Right, and.
And I know nothing about the project, so again, I, I would like to have some information on that one.
Get a plan.
I find that one too.
Yeah. Alright, and, and.
He's gonna have a lot of work to do, not him, them, to get it, to be from what we approved to where he's at now.
Well, I, we can't.
I mean, he's just gotta do something.
Gotta do something, that's where my gym is, I go there every day.
Because it, it, if you give me what I'm looking for and what I want to inspect on this thing, I'll take care of it.
It's just, that's, that's another complete site plan, complete.
And so once I get that, that drawing information, I can look at it, see what, what is, I can go in there. With, with that information, I can request access to the property.
Yeah.
I just can't go in there and knock on the door and say, here I am, I'm looking for.
Checking it out.
I'm looking for something.
Yeah, don't know what it is, but.
You ever heard that before?
I'll know when I see it.
Yeah.
And in his, in case, in his case, he wouldn't know what he sees, is it?
I, I have no idea what's going on with that, okay, one thirty-seven to, so that's number two on my new list of.
And so, but there was.
But there's gonna be some drawings coming with it, I'm sorry.
No, that makes sense, but when you looked in your files for ninety-nine Hartwell, there was nothing in there for, with a site plan review?
I, not as specific as you just mentioned, no.
Alright, cause it may be the same thing you already have, is what I'm thinking.
It, it could, it, it could be, but.
Alright.
If, if we're gonna work on it, I will, get, get, we will sit down and say, okay, you gave me this, this is what I'm gonna look for. All the other stuff, a lot of the stuff I looked up goes back.
Oh, yeah.
To people I never even.
I'm sure, uh, um, who's our engineer? What's in there again?
The H V.
Be, I'm sure they have a lot, cause they went back and forth how many times, like drainage in the back.
We have a lot of information, but.
Okay, when I get all the info, then I have something to work with, okay, alright, number six. Uh.
Yeah.
The, the, the full, now, this is what you were talking about. I went down there to look for, uh, the site plan reviewers, you wanted, uh, for what they have done with the storage facilities. But since they're doing all this work, well, once everything is done, they're gonna do a complete site plan of the whole, of all the projects, this is what he told me. Okay, this is what he told me. And the U-Hauls are gonna be gone May first, they've already contacted U-Haul, May first, they're supposed to be gone.
Alright, so I guess we'll all be looking.
And I'll be looking.
May second, may second, you'd be driving right by there.
This is, and, and this is what I was told.
Can you send a letter?
After, if they're not.
If they're not gone, I can.
But he, he can't send it right now, right?
I've already talked to him face to face, so they.
Yeah, but we, he did tell me, he did thought it will be gone.
Well, let's, let's wait and see.
Yeah.
May second, if they're still there.
Let's not make extra work.
It was.
He's got long lists to start.
Yeah.
So if I go May first, if May, May first comes along and it's not there, I will pursue it. I will pursue it, I'll go and I'll find, what, you know, you told me May first, it's over here.
Maybe you should have said to the people, you know, today, that we all look like an.
Well, it's only a week, a little week away.
No, it seems better, it's like they came in, they asked for it, and we said, we put the building inspector on it, and then two weeks later, they're gone. That's, that's.
Everybody, everybody looks like a hero.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And so.
I don't wanna go in there, you know, firing away either.
Right.
This is what's gotta be done.
Right.
Get it done, talk nicely, softly, okay, comes back next day, say, hey, what's going on?
Right, and just, this one, he came in for whatever is one fifty-one, for one fifty-one site. He has no site plan review, I don't think.
Which one are you talking about? Oh, one fifty-one.
Shrewsbury.
Yeah.
I don't know that, have we got a site plan review for the building at one thirty-seven?
Is that the old building?
Yeah, the old building, I thought we only had it for the storage unit.
The storage unit, that's what I was under the.
Because I'm, when I drive by and look at the existing.
Didn't he just apply that, for that one? The one thirty-seven one?
The one thirty-seven is the, um.
Revolution or.
Revolution, yeah, the, the baseball thing?
Right.
Yeah.
Cause the only thing I was looking at with that one was, if you're looking at the building, there's two parking spaces kind of in the front. That look like they're in the front yard setback, but I don't know where the front yard setback is, so I don't think we would've allowed those there. So I, if I remember, I, I know we looked at the site plan review for the new building, the one fifty-one. I don't remember how much review we gave for one thirty-seven, but I know we didn't allow a, a variance to the zoning to allow parking in the front yard setback.
Right, and, and when I, when I went there, I did not see that, an indication that that was taking place. And if they parked there, different hours, different times, and paved.
No, it's paved.
It's paved there, but I, I have, I didn't see them using it as a.
But that's something we would look for when we.
I'm sure we have a drawing of that and reviewed it, because I remember the discussion about sharing the parking.
Okay.
Is it, they talked about the, so we.
They need to look at the plan.
People from the ballpark would use the parking from the.
So we don't know if it's striped for parking.
There's no, I don't recall any striping at all.
Okay, so they shouldn't be parking there.
Well, it's paved, so it's, and it may be, it may be that there's ten feet, and then the parking is right up to the ten foot setback. And there's not that much space between the pavement and the roadway Shrewsbury Street, so I.
So, on May first, I'll go check on, on the parking and, uh, as well as the U-Hauls and see what, where it has come.
Do you know if you have the plan for that site?
I will look, I will look it up.
Cause if you don't have a plan for any of these, let us know and we can get you.
I would, I, yeah, okay, I'll do that, I'd like to see that, so I can say, okay, this is number three, and then work, and then open up, open up.
I think, you know, he should look at our plans.
That's what I, that's the point I'm trying to make, is your plans.
When he goes there, they have a different kind of.
No, 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 his office.
Yeah. If I haven't been my office or your plans, sometime I wanna get a plan to look at, so I know what I'm looking for.
And our plans, if it's the approved plan, it's signed by the.
By all of you, I.
So, then you know it's the plan.
Alright, uh, one thousand Good Dale Holy Cross, uh, I, I'm still working on that with, uh, uh, to get, to get in there, cause it's gated. And I didn't have a number for it, and.
Yeah.
We got any?
Yeah, they said they.
We have a response, he, a person came here, talked about it, and we agreed for him to send us a, a notice of the. Notice that went out to the Holy Cross people saying. You have to bus people in from Worcester.
Right, like that, and it looks like now that they're gonna institute fines if they do it.
So this is, so this is off the list.
I think you're also.
It's off your list.
That, it's off the list as far as that, but we still need to.
But you're still gonna.
We're still doing the site plan review, finishing that.
Okay, okay.
And they said in the, in this email that he's having someone contact us to submit what they need.
So right now, um, I was, I have three things now, three things that I still have to work on.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so six is gone, let's look at number eight, ninety Sterling Street Big Daddy Condos. That is offset, that's been done, um.
Are they done?
There's a.
I thought, no.
Uh, special purposes, he. No, I'm.
Holding, you're holding one building occupancy, I think, on that one.
No, this is, this is something different, um, I don't know, I thought this was all done.
I think ninety Sterling, you were holding.
I, all the front work's been done, all the drainage's been taken care of, they put up the.
DOT, DOT is okay with the drainage?
Yeah, the DOT, uh, contact.
Fence, there's a front fence that might have.
The front fence is repaired, there's a, the guard rail has been put back in correctly, uh.
What about the speed bump?
The speed bump out back.
Did you drive over it?
It, I did not drive over it.
Give it a try.
So he lives next to the.
Yeah, he's the next door neighbor.
It's, uh, fixed.
It's, I go by, I go by it every day and it still looks pretty, uh, lumpy.
Well, but either way, they still, they still need site plan review, they need to close out.
Okay, and that's a site plan review, okay.
And the only thing that really gets them to come to us is holding those COs.
Well, let me tell you something about the COs, because there are some temp, one, one of the people before me, not mentioning any names.
Yeah.
Uh, but everyone's familiar who I'm talking about, uh, gave temporary COs. And they sold the condos with temporary COs, so we're kinda stuck.
Did they sell all of them?
Uh, they, I think they only have two.
Two, two more units.
Two more units, yeah.
So they can hold on to those, I guess.
Yeah.
How long did that come off?
They're all gone.
They're all.
They're all sold?
Yeah, they're all, yeah.
Cause the sign is down, there's no sign, the only sign that's up there, they don't even have the sign that they used to be up there, they used to say what the name of the complex was. The only two signs that are up there are two small signs, one that says ninety on it, and one that says eighty-six, that's it.
Oh, okay.
So I have, um, I have gone there, I've looked at the places, I told them what they have to complete and, and fix, and they've done everything, and, uh. They, the, out front, there was some gravel, or some paving that had to be done. All has been taken care of as far as my eyes concerned, I have no site plan review. Or anything from that, unless you folks got something.
No, that's, and that's the issue, we need to get it.
Is this supposed to be a condo association in that place?
Not yet.
There should be, yes.
I mean, you could, you could try to get, inform on that.
So the, the mass DOT, that's been taken care of, fence has been taken care of, sight line is not a problem, and the only thing left is that.
Oh, do they move the fence back?
Yeah, that, that corner part, that, they.
Oh, that's good, that's.
I mean, that was the whole idea.
Can I just ask when that was done? Because I just went there yesterday, and that sight line, that sight line, coming off a Stro- coming, when you're coming, gonna come off, onto Sterling Street.
From five.
From the right, you cannot, you have to pull out almost onto Sterling Street to see, plus the fence was still crooked.
Well, I, I, I pulled, I looked at that specifically, I didn't have that kind of a problem, I'll go check it again.
Okay, and has the fence, cause I know one of the questions.
The fence was, uh, was in rough shape, and the last time I passed by, I had to go up further up on Sterling Street, uh, it looked like it's been repaired.
Okay, cause I know one of the questions was, is that people thought that the fence was on state property.
I mean, the, the street.
The white fence.
The white fence?
Was on state property.
Within the layout of the.
In the state route.
So if, and so that's one of the things we look at on the site plan review, if it's within there, they can, they can put it on the state property if they get.
If they get the permission from the.
Right of a permit, which they'll never get, so it's usually, they're gonna pull it back.
Okay, so what I'll do is, uh. Okay, so what I'll do is uh.
So we could use some assistance to kind of encourage them to finish up their site plan review.
Yeah, well, I can I can I can shake the trees as long as I have the.
Reason to do it.
The reason to do it and and yeah. Okay, next one is Ari's. We just went through that. Uh Kevin's Auto. I went up through there and um. There is a there's a lot of stuff going on there. And I um I sat there for about twenty minutes and just watched. And uh what I found was that there's like forty cars out there.
In the back block?
In the back area.
And the side.
And the side and all the way through the place. Some registered, some unregistered, some with the fenders off, some. You know, everything's going on there. Uh I don't know what else that we can do here except for um. You know, hit him for the unregistered motor vehicles there. Now, sales, I I think he's just repairing things there, so I didn't see anything. I I saw one vehicle for sale out front with some stickers on it and that's all I saw.
Does he share the lot with uh?
The next door neighbor? Uh that I don't know. No, I think they're separate entities.
Separate.
He owns he owns his property and he kind of sneaks into whatever that.
And vice versa too, because behind the auto body part, there's some more cars. I didn't even count those.
Yeah, no, that's the uh yeah, Menards. But they're all fenced off. They actually have a site plan. They did.
Now, the only thing I saw that yeah, right.
But these they have more than fifteen cars, so that's fifteen spaces.
Yep.
So they haven't done site plan review, so they need to come in and do a site plan review, I think.
So I so my that's what I was just gonna point out. I think that that particular uh. Place, I think I I'll go in there and tell them they need a site plan review for all those cars, basically.
How about parking on the street? Is that okay?
I think parking on the street is what we've gotten for before.
Well, we if he organizes a site, it'll be fine, but when I asked that question. There was they were parking on whatever that size street. I think it's Alcatraz.
I know, but that's my mind goes Alcatraz.
Alhambra or Alca- it's one of those. Whatever it is, he actually plows it for it's a private road.
Yeah.
So there's no prohibition against parking on a private road, is what the town police chief said.
So I'm gonna I'm gonna I'll send them a letter uh.
It's more just keep your stuff on your property.
Property in order and keep it neat.
Right, and I don't know that we need a heck of a lot of stuff for a site plan review. This is gonna be another one like. Pinecroft where it's this is kind of what we've got, a little probably even less. Onerous than what Ari had to go through because she was redoing it redoing a site plan review.
Real site plan, yeah.
This is gonna be one where it's okay, this is the as-built. These are the issues. You've got parking here, you're. I don't know, if there's something that jumps out and it's against the zoning, then he has to stop doing that and just show it on the plan that it's stopping, that kind of thing, but it's. We don't wanna make it too onerous, but there needs to be some documentation that.
That that we've asked him to do.
And not have old junk.
Junk hanging around uh because some of them look like they're.
Haven't moved.
They're rooting into the ground.
Yeah.
Now, the back part of it um. Where it uh borders the housing out in the back. There's some houses you can see from that parking area.
On Merrymount.
I I'm not familiar with the street. It's up it's up and back.
I think Alhambra is the whole road.
No, Merrymount.
If you go if you go up Alcatraz, oh well, whatever it is, go up there and you look to your left up on the hill, you can see. The houses.
Those are on Merrymount.
People looking out there can see all these cars. So you know, a fencing of some sort uh in a site plan review. Some trees, some arbidides or something growing up the back there.
Yeah.
To to.
Little screening.
Yeah, do some screening there. Um that's the major thing I saw would probably be.
Just putting in a fence or something.
Putting a fence uh. I I would prefer arbidides or trees of some sort only because.
That's fine.
If you go over a seven foot fence, you have to go a twelve foot fence. Now the building code gets involved and then it's got all kinds of issues in there, so.
Yeah, so maybe that's that would make sense.
Yeah.
Is it fenced at all back there or is it all open lock?
There's some fencing, but it's inadequate.
Okay.
Uh so three twelve, uh I'm just gonna put down arbidides.
Yeah, screening fences. Screening company of others.
Yeah. And I I I'm gonna I'm gonna get him with that and then.
Well, that's I I got a call from a couple of well, I know I remember one of the neighbors complained about it and. When I was there, wetland flows. This was four years ago or five years I've been trying to.
Well, my my plan is to go there and say, hey, look, you know, plant some screening back or put a fence up.
Well, he's gotta do a site plan review.
Site plan review.
And that would be the biggest. I think that's probably the biggest thing he's gonna have to do.
Yeah.
And maybe he may have to pave an area where he's gonna store junk cars that might leak and that's about it.
Alright, uh next one is um. Seventy-one Central Street Snow Piling Sight Sight Line.
Seventy-one Central.
Um.
Snow pile.
I looked I looked at snow. I looked I looked for some snow and I couldn't find any. I think that's okay. Wipe it out.
Well, what?
DPW, I think a DPW.
That was um the problem comes up is well, I use this one and actually. We come down from Prospect Street.
Yeah.
And you're gonna take a left on Crescent with the light department kitty corner on your left. If you look to your right towards Darby, you can't see cause that mound of snow when they.
Yes, that's correct.
When they plow in front of Casey's and it used to be a chiropractor there.
Chiropractor there or whatever.
When they plow that, they would plow it all the way down the end and my my mound it up is not allowed.
Now that um you you have here uh building inspector or DPW.
Yes, somebody who does who enforces plowing snow to block sight lines. Now you don't have to worry.
Not cause it's part of your site, part of your your job to say, well, where are you gonna put your snow?
Right.
Yeah, but.
But they're not doing a site plan review.
They're not doing that, no.
It's an existing.
Existing.
And I know the town some the town sometimes goes out there with big loader. When we get a lot of snow in the winter, the load they have to get the loader out and they haul it away even though it's.
For them, for them.
It's not town snow, yeah.
This one here you can put on my list against that will be number four, whatever. And I'll when it snows again.
Before.
Be before it snows in the fall, when the weeds fall, I'll tell them.
Just ask them.
Ask them, say, hey, look, you know, you can't file this up. We can't see where everyone's going.
I don't know.
I'll talk to DPW too.
He's not there.
I'm not sure who owns it, but it's one of those that.
Yeah, I I I will look into that, put that on my list. I can I can uh look at that in the fall. Alright, uh the radio tower, I have no idea or anything about that.
Well, that's same as Ari's. They did a site plan review. They got a permit. Never came back with the as-built and the only condition that was included in their approval. Was to correct the drainage problem of the water coming down the access road and going out into Route one forty. And it hasn't been corrected.
That's the town, right?
For the antenna?
The one up by on Beaman Street, yeah.
So this is town property.
Is it a new access road?
No, and that's why when we did the uh when we did the site plan review, we knew there was an issue there. And they were gonna have a machine going up there to do some ground and earthwork. So we said, well, while you're up there, the condition was just divert the flow from what's coming down the driveway and there's a drop-in manhole, a catch basin off the side of the road. Where they can just put it all into, but no one did anything. And the water now comes straight down and it ices over on Route one forty before you go down and around the corner and you get to the reservoir. Right where Pleasant Street is.
Slide right in?
Yeah, cutler.
Good, yeah.
It's not the DCR property.
The water goes to the DCR.
It's water, isn't everything water, DCR?
It's an icing problem.
Yeah, maybe we should talk to the DCR.
I don't think that's I. I don't know if that's something, but you know, I I don't know, anyway. Alright, uh so I'll I'll knock that off my list unless you guys want me to visit that again later. I don't know what you want me to do with that.
Well, it's I don't know what.
I don't know who who do I speak?
I don't think that that applicant is gonna do anything else.
That I think that's dead in the water personally.
That guy, the guy who was just selling the antenna and volunteered to do the site plan review for them?
Well, he didn't volunteer. He was making money on the antenna stuff.
That's what I mean, but.
But who how do we finish projects? This is another one of those that's just gonna languish. I don't think it's gonna be a big.
We're gonna ask them. We could certainly get in time. I don't know his contact information.
Do you wanna talk to?
If you talk to you talk to him, find out what's going on and then I will.
I just gotta talk to the fire.
I'll do whatever, you know, to push it forward if necessary.
Isn't the police chief doing that one?
Or the police or fire.
Well, it was a communication. Yeah, it was a mu- the antenna is emergency communication.
I know they had to do something to it because um there was a di- a a. I think they needed a different antenna for for the fire department or something like that.
All of a sudden?
Uh I I did I this is stuff that I've read.
But that was the whole point of the project was to take away all the old antennas.
Well, let me.
Okay.
From what I what I have from information, I'm I work with what I have. And if you guys have better information.
Well, not on the antenna stuff, just on the SVR's.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so uh okay, so we'll 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 check that with the chief.
That's me. I'll check with the chief.
Okay, uh the next one is uh one hundred Century Drive.
Yep.
Uh that. Is extended to six nineteen.
Yeah, that's coming up.
This is that that's coming up.
Just a part of it.
Yeah, so that one I think was okay. So our status when its status is okay.
It's it's fine, yeah. Okay, next one is Temple Street at Pierce the West Boilston White Plan. So are ready. Here you go. As built.
Oh.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
So we can review that, put that on the agenda and.
There's two copies there.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Do you need one of them or do you?
I you can pick give them back to me with your signatures on it. Let me know that uh it's been taken care of.
Excellent.
Alright, uh Jakes and um.
Fretzels.
Are they still there?
No.
No.
This is now on the list a lot.
Yeah. I think that this thing here, we can just. Yeah, strike it out and I'll I'll keep an eye on it, basically.
The thing is is they they were a butters in the back. The landscaping company that came in and is using the property in the back to store all their equipment and. They've never done any site plan review for this.
If it makes you happy, you know, there'll be a wine tasting there. Maybe you can go there.
Yeah, the wine tasting.
Fretzels?
Mondays beer, wine. Behind you, Jake.
What's there?
Brewery. There is one brewery in town.
Is it brewery?
Yeah, that Fran and Fran Fran and Fran and always a friend.
Henry and Fran.
Fran and Fran.
Forty-five Laurel Street.
This divorce weapon gave him a one day.
We were trying to figure out how it ever got there.
Laurel Street?
Yes.
Now, the prob- the only thing I find with Jakes is that there is no this park they're parking out in front of that restaurant. Uh and the cars are all parked out front. Uh there's no lining lines there, but they're all they park everywhere.
This is another one just like Kevin's.
Yeah.
Henry and Fran Brewing Company.
Who could the address?
Laurel. Laurel Street.
So.
In West Boilston?
Yes.
Alright, so it's.
And you got down here first notice. I don't know. What was the first notice?
Sign, yeah.
Was it which one are we at?
Yeah, Bourbon.
Number seventeen.
Jakes, is that?
Jakes and Fretzels.
Yeah.
Well, Jakes.
Well, I think what we wanted to do is do the business center thing.
Right, it's a business center, but they don't have a permit for a business center. So they need to do a site plan review.
Okay.
White building.
And whatever's there. There's a accountant upstairs. There used to be a flower shop.
Is Jake's the accountant?
Cause it's a beauty place or whatever.
And there's now a brewery there?
No.
No, 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 they're just having a one day uh.
At Jakes?
Yeah, behind it, behind it, in that parking area behind, a one day fenced off, you know.
Like a beer garden.
Like a beer, uh yeah.
That's fun.
Okay, so so I I will talk to them about a site plan review of that business center.
Just to establish themselves as a business.
Yeah, um yes, yeah. Two, let's see.
Has that been more than three years on the list?
That's uh. Probably. Yeah, cause three years is a limit.
Wasn't there an agreement that town council said on that permitting?
No.
Then have to.
No.
Anything over three years.
No, absolutely not. We've had this conversation five times. No, there's no. Grandfathering of stuff when it comes to zoning if there's a site plan review that's been submitted. This one, there's been no site plan review. They're still in violation of zoning. And they're in a situation where if they didn't change their uses, they'd be all set. But because the uses have changed, that's what triggers the zoning requirements.
So as long as there's been a site plan review submitted, i- and if it's more than three years, then we don't have to worry about it. We don't have to go after it.
No, that's the opposite of what I said.
Because look what happened to Mass Research. That was on the list for, you know, umpteen years. Never got never got a a a final site plan review. You dismissed it. Now. The company has sold and it's now a new business, but yet on the poor lady that's trying to buy finances. You're saying that she needs to come back with something that happened thirteen years ago. Well, if there was a site plan review thirteen years ago and hasn't been done. And town council is saying that anything after three years, we should forget, then she shouldn't have to worry about what happened thirteen years ago.
Council did not say that.
Yeah.
Town council said something about six years was zoning requirements.
And the permitting board agreed on three years.
No, they didn't.
When I was on the board, that's what we that's what was agreed to anyways.
Well, then she has two years left and she'll get a permit.
And Mass Materials was fifteen years prior.
But they never.
But Mass Materials doesn't need a license from the board selecting. That's why she's talking about it.
Okay.
Every year comes up.
Alright, moving on. Uh so so we I'll get my new list after this, after I go to this. Thank God, I'll have a new list.
I think it'll be longer.
No, it won't be. Don't you dare, don't you dare. We'll work on it. Okay, uh I'm down to um. Ninety-four ninety-four ninety-two North Main Street. Um I have a letter here. That says. That it is it was part of the original site plan review.
This is a this this is also a weird one because it's forty B, so we don't even have actually have the prints.
We're talking about ninety-four?
Right, we're gonna start with ninety-four. Ninety-four, there's a multifamily housing on in a single residence district.
Right.
It's not allowed according to the zoning straight unless it was permitted through the forty B stuff. Which I haven't seen anything, but if you have something that.
I got some, what is this?
So then that allows a multifamily?
Here, I certify is.
Albert Roddy?
Yeah, turn the pages.
No, this is that's a different one. This is not ninety-four North.
Yeah, the next page, next page.
Oh, okay. Still Mr. Roddy.
That's just ninety-four.
Ninety-four Lancaster. This is ninety-four North Main.
Oh, I was got the wrong. Oh, I grabbed the wrong one. Okay, I'm bad.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong one.
Well, that's that one's farther down, I think.
Yeah.
Is this?
Let's stay on this one. Let's let's stay here for a minute.
Is it on that one?
Yeah, number twenty-seven.
Alright, let's go over that one. Here you go.
Okay. Good, closer to the end there.
Yeah.
Does ZVA give it? Okay.
Okay.
Special cord to sell and serve outdoor power equipment.
Off, off the list.
Off the list.
Yep.
Okay, so you guys are all set with that. Good.
Yes.
Alright, now um so twenty-seven is done.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
What does it say?
So where were we?
So we were on.
Number seven, number eighteen.
Number eighteen.
Eighteen.
Ninety-four North.
I I I don't have that.
That's the one that they put the drainage thing in front right in front of it.
It's attractive.
It's very attractive. I.
Well, it's.
I think that's I think that's the pool.
I get I I get why it's it just sounds just.
But according to the records, that has been a multi-family home for you.
Yeah.
I'm I'm sure.
Yes, but that that's what I found out. According to what I he was he had his business in there for a while. While he was doing them.
That's correct.
Multifamily with a business. It's like a building zoning right there in one building.
That's right.
We when he first started developing ninety-two North Main Street, okay, he had no place to put it. So the ZVA gave him permission to use the house as his office until he got a trailer up onto the site. Which he did, but according to the records that I was able to find, years ago, that has always been a three family home. Even though it's even though it's a single residence, I can't find anything that says that it it never was. Everything says it it is.
What's where's what's everything? You check your assessor records and that's it?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything besides assessor records?
I can't find anything else, but every but everything else.
So what would we what would we like to happen then?
Well, I don't know. I just a couple of neighbors said, well, what's going on? They've got and they were they were at a hearing. They were here and they were saying, well. How can they have it's a single residence district. It's a three family house. How can that be?
I think I think it's it's the history was that it has always been a three family house. I I have no other other recourse to go with it because.
I mean, usually there's something assessor records are basically just.
And that's what we found, that's what we found. I I I'll 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 do some more exploring of it.
Well, I mean, I don't doesn't matter to me either way. If it's a grandfathered use, then whenever the zoning came in.
I what it says, I don't have the answer for you right now. I can find more information on it, but I think it's gonna end up being.
Is that house occupied now?
Yes.
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
By three families?
By three different individuals. Three it's three apartments. That was the last that I heard about a year ago from Mr. Ali.
And it looked like it was all I I drove by. I parked there for a while and watched it. Watched the uh.
Paint dry.
Trying to see what's going on and. So that I think is gonna end up being.
And and maybe, yeah, yeah.
Alright, UMass uh Woodwin uh.
Oh, that's my brother.
Next one.
Okay.
But it's ninety-two North.
Ninety-two.
No, nineteen or twenty.
Ninety.
The sign, the uh bright sign.
Yeah, oh, that was on that. That was on that um. Uh that's the other thing. I I'll get that other letter I have. That said it was part of the.
Project.
The project, the ZVA. It was it that was part of the project, so there's no problem with the sign.
ZVA approved that.
Except it's too bright.
Yeah.
That was under the limit of the whatever they approved.
I don't know what the numbers are, but.
The only thing I could do that.
So it it came up to the ZVA again.
Yeah.
So it, it came up to the ZVA again, okay? So ZVA, they, somebody brought it up to the ZVA, say, this is too bright. Then they looked at, too bright, too, the size is too big, all those things. It's a single family residence. How can we put this big sign, big bright light, brought up to the board? And then, you know, the property owner was there and he did explain. And also everyone looked, all the members looked at the, uh, complacency permit. He is following.
Comprehensive permit said okay to a backlit sign?
What?
Comprehensive permit approved a backlit sign?
Yes. And also, you know, and also, and also.
Get a copy of that.
To make you little comfort, he did, he did dim the lights.
Good.
Earlier to now. That's what he says.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, so if we just get a copy of that.
Somebody, somebody did ask me this.
Yeah, we, I.
We don't need the forty-five or eighty pages, just give us.
Yeah, the, the sign part, I, I know I have that because I read it and I said, okay, that took care of that.
Should be in the comprehensive permit.
Yeah.
The latest one.
I agree, it should be.
So, so we don't have, we don't have a, a way of measuring lumens at a certain number of feet?
I think.
There is a, there is a.
Meter.
Gadget that you can buy, a meter.
Right.
And I talked to.
But did you tell the foot candles?
Building inspector, and he said they cost like four, four or five hundred dollars.
I think you should buy one.
I think so too.
So, whether, but that would be something that the town.
If you know someone that has, um, good with cameras, when they have light meters.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes there's a light meter that will do that, that's cheaper, that has an agree of.
If we're gonna do it, I could use it for, you know, inspecting buildings too, checking on your, on lumens.
Cause there's the same, cause there was the same problem with, um, West Boylston Seafood.
Oh, it's.
When they, um, when they changed over from the manual sign to the illuminated sign.
Last I noticed that was really still bright.
That has been, from what I can see, it's been, I mean, I don't think it's very bright, but, you know.
When it's, when it's all white with a few letters, it's very bright, but, but maybe they might have changed it recently. But they'll be good if.
But I know that there's a meter that, that you can buy, and I don't know what, like, that would be up to George and, you know, whether.
Take it, just deduct it from our planning board pay.
Yeah, I, I, I think it'd be good to have, they last forever.
Yeah, because the one on the top, the one that we have in town, in town, it's kind of bright too, so.
Do you have a spec on it or a reference? Can you send something over to us?
What?
The, this meter, this.
No, it's just something that the.
It just measures the foot candles, foot candles. I can, I can, I'll look something up.
Okay. And is that, do we, the zoning bylaws or the sign bylaws mention foot candles?
Nits.
Nits, yeah.
Okay, great, good deal.
Nit units.
Is that nips?
Nits?
Nits.
Nits?
What is going on over there?
National Illumination Units.
Oh, okay.
So I'll, 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 I'll look into that.
Okay, that'd be good.
You're just making that up, alright.
I don't know, I was making that up, yeah.
Okay, so, so we got these, so we, we, my list is shorter now. It's, it's getting shorter now. Alright, let's move it on to, um.
And twenty, and we're all set for twenty minutes.
West Boylston Street, uh, Gerardo's, um.
Uh, twenty-two?
Damn.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, UMass, oh, okay, yeah.
Or is he really wanted to skip that?
I wanted to skip that one.
Is that what you're kept?
I got some documentation I gotta find at my house. I promised the guy I wouldn't submit anything else to VHB before I looked at it myself, so he wouldn't waste any more money, so I gotta look at the stuff he gave me.
So, so that's your problem.
And then we, that's my problem for a little while.
Okay.
And how many years has this been?
Since I was chair. How, how long ago was I chair?
Eighteen years ago.
Yeah, about that.
Alright, so that's gonna be off my list.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be on this list, if that's not your list, then it's off your list.
Alright, no, the list that, that my, my.
We'll put his initials next to it.
Okay, alright. Okay, now, um, Gerardo's and Always. Uh, I went there and, uh, the parking is, I mean, it's a, it's a popular place.
It's great, yeah.
It's a great place. They have changed traffic flow. One entrance and then one entrance out. Which has made it, uh, much easier, cause I drove the, maybe six times in and out through there. Through all times, different times.
Cenolis? One cannoli each time?
Now, each, right, I had to go in there, but it.
Free coffee.
It did move nicely.
Yes, that, that, we actually approved that side.
Sort of.
The question that comes up is the, on the backside, they didn't have any parking approved for the backside between the seafood place and their property.
Yeah.
So, what, this has been another one that's been going on for a while, so there was, there was all, it was just grass. What we approved was grass. They have had parking there now for a while, and I guess they only striped in fourteen parking spaces. But if you look at it when you drive by, there's.
There's totally thirty-five line spaces, three handicap.
No, on the backside.
The other side.
On north side of the.
Oh, here we go.
Okay.
Let's go.
You got it up? But on the north side of the building is the issue. The front side of the Steve's Pizza side is permitted and that's okay. It's the backside.
Other side.
Oh, okay, alright.
It's in between the West Boylston Seafood and Gerardo. West Boylston Seafood and Gerardo.
I'll, I'll look into that again then.
I think, you know, there may, I don't think so there is a striping, right?
There's no striping yet.
No striping.
But we were told.
I was, when I see, when I see on here it says, uh, Gerardo's Al- Always, I went in and out, and that's where I was checking.
This side.
It's on the, it's on the left-hand side.
It's still Gerardo's and Always, but it's on the backside.
See, I wa- I wasn't aware of that, that's what you were referring to.
For Gerardo's and Always, as well as some parking for.
Oh, there, you can see it, it is striped.
And so, but the situation is if they have over the, over fifteen parking spaces, they are supposed to be going for site plan review.
So, which, which I understand that, I, I understand that, but they've. You're, I don't know anything what's happened. You said they added, you, they were supposed to have grassy area there, and they put parking places instead.
Right.
That, over there.
Okay, so which one you?
So, I mean, the problem is this area right here.
Oh.
But this is showing before they did their work, this is just happens to be an old satellite.
Sure, yeah.
But now, there's, I guess there's a narrow strip of grass, there's parking from this side. You know, they can park their cars, and then these guys can park up against buildings in parallel there.
So, you don't know who belongs to that site?
Oh, it's nobody.
We don't know who owns that property.
That's, which, okay, I can find that out.
I don't really care who owns the property. If we, if they come in with a lawyer that say they own it, we'll tax them, I don't care.
Yeah.
We should get tax revenue for the parking lot that they're using, and they should have gotten a site plan review approval for the paving and.
But we gotta find out, we gotta find out who that is. Is it, is it Gerardo's?
It might even be a paper, couldn't it be a paper street?
It is a paper street.
So it's, so it's a fairchild.
Yeah.
It's a paper street, but somebody paved it and is using it for parking, and it's the patrons for Allies, Gerardo's, and West Boylston Seafood.
So it's a common parking area for both businesses?
Right, which is fine, and we, I actually have a plan from, I think around twelve years ago of what, when Gerardo's, or when West Boylston Seafood came in.
Next year we have to ignore it.
Yeah, next year.
That's right. When West Boylston Seafood came in and said, yep, we wanna plant, we wanna change this parking area.
Did you call that a paper street?
A paper, yes.
Yeah, just cause it's not, just cause it was planned to be a street but never got paved.
Ah.
Fairchild really does go around the back of West Boylston Seafood.
See that white, it's kind of like paper?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's right, I was like.
It's, it's Paxman Street now.
So two thousand ten is the date we got this from Gerardo's and West Boylston Seafood. They got a, an approval to do work. So that's Steve's Pizza there? Oh, no, that's the, that's the roadway, Magnolia Road, which is the other, that's the exit area. So it's the area between the two, and they were gonna come in here and show us what they were gonna do for parking.
Okay, so that's two thousand ten?
Well, since then, yes. They put the parking in.
But that, yeah, make, I, I want to have a copy of that so I can work with that.
Well, that's just a sketch. I, we have the as-built plans for this one, for Gerardo's.
But not that, not that paper street side.
Here's what it looks like.
Right.
Okay, if I can get some of that information, I can, I can work on that.
For design plan?
Right now?
No.
No, at some point get it, get it.
Please don't, please don't.
Okay, this is your copy.
Turn me the scanner.
It's ten o'clock, I ate it out here.
Here, give me that, can I?
Ten o'clock.
When it gets to ten o'clock, I gotta, I gotta.
Maybe, maybe crying.
Maybe.
That's right, exactly.
So you're gonna get me that information?
Yes.
Say, I can look at it on the video from here.
I would rather see you just give it to me in the package when you give me my new list and everything.
Yes.
Alright, let's move on so we can get, you know, uh, twenty-seven Pier Street. Okay, that definitely has to be a site plan review. Uh, there are seventy-seven trailers there.
What?
Seventy-seven trailers.
Trailers?
Trailers?
Trailers. Seventy-seven.
Oh, yeah, yeah, jammed up on the lot.
They're all over the place. Matter of fact, the other day, I was there looking at it, counting up, and he was pulling another trailer in, uh, from Flags. And, uh, he, uh, I guess I, I.
That's.
Yeah, it's seventy-seven.
It's a Pier Street address?
Now, this is not owned by Flags.
Right.
It's owned by the, the owner of the, old VFW, and the parking was based upon the VFW seating arrangements.
Right.
So, it's no longer there, so this should be brought up to, uh, the owner of the property and say, hey, look, you know, you gotta go site pla- whatever you wanna do with it.
Yes, no, it, it needs site plan review, and he's got more than one unregistered vehicle on the lot, so it needs to stop. And if he's gonna do automobile sales, he needs a special permit, I think, from the ZVA.
Who, who quarter-quarter proved this in the beginning?
Nobody.
Nobody?
Nobody did?
No.
Not without.
Well, the building, the old building inspector.
The old building, yeah.
Supposedly he went to the, uh, to, uh, the owner of Flag Day and wanted to store, he didn't have enough room on his.
Right, store, yes.
Wanted to store it, and the question was about, you know, regis- unregistered vehicles. Well, unless it is a mobile, in other words, it has an engine in it, then a trailer like that does not come so he can have as many as he wants on that property.
Technically, then none are allowed on the property.
No, that, that's two different issues. That was the, there was a limit on his current site over on Shoes, on West Boylston Street where he had a hundred or whatever the number was, and he was saying it was based on the motorized vehicles and non-motorized. That has nothing to do with whether there's a, a registration, unregistered vehicle or not.
This, this matter never came up.
What's your email?
This property is the VFW property in our zoning system. You can't have more than one unregistered vehicle.
N R.
Is it a, are they, are they vehicles?
It's got a VIN number.
Or are they mobiles?
West Boylston Dash Mass.
You have to register it with the Registry of Motor Vehicles.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so that's a, that's.
If it's got a VIN number, it's.
Yeah, it's a vehicle.
So you, you will write a letter to the.
I, I, this one here, um, I will write a letter to him and tell him that you have.
To the owner.
To the owner, right.
The Flag Day.
Right, right, and that, and I think under our zoning, he needs a special permit for automobile use like sales and display or whatever it might be.
Well, he would have to go to, get a, get a license through the, uh, probably the board of selectmen on it to have those trails there.
Yeah.
Just like he had to do with his site.
Exactly.
Down the road, so.
Right.
First of all, I will, I will shake the tree and say that needs a site plan review to, to the owner, and he can just tell him, okay, take them all out of there or whatever he wants to do with it, I don't know what. I hate to see a guy, he's making money off of an empty lot, but, you know, this is, that's a, that's a, I saw that. I agree with all of this.
The neighbors were not happy about that, and that's good, thank you.
Alright, twenty-eight on Lee Street, Dance Aer- uh, aerobics and stuff like that. It sits way back up the road, off the road, and, um, it's, I didn't see, nah, just, yeah, I went up seventy-seven which is the abandoned house.
Right.
And I kind of walked over, I didn't see any, any.
It happens on weekends, is what I was told, and the sign, was there a sign up? Did you see?
There's a sign up front that is not, doesn't say anything about goat yogurt or yogurt. I'm sorry, yoga. Uh, believe it or not, my thought was goat yogurt, so.
Well, but the situation is it's a single residence district, there should be no business in there.
Yeah, the only, the only thing is, is up there now.
Been a long time.
No, there hasn't.
There's been the shrimp, the shrimp people were there, right?
Well, yeah, that was an agricultural business, which is allowed, cause it's an agriculture is allowed in all districts.
Then we got a final two, I'll have to look up, see how many acres of land out there, cause it can classify as a farm back there too.
Yeah, I mean, he could have a farm, that, which is fine, and a, a farm business is okay.
Maybe that's what the go-to.
I think, I think that's, we just gotta verify what's going on there.
Yep.
Right.
Alright.
Cause like an exercise place is not.
You'd have, you'd really have goat.
But if, but the way to, way, um.
Talk to Sarai.
The way, the way, the way it goes is that if, if they're making their money from the goats, then it's a farming activity.
Yeah, but there are no, there are no goats out there.
Well, I, I didn't see any, you know, they could have them in the barn, or you said it happens on the weekends and.
Well, the, right, yeah, so that's what, that's what we need.
I'll get some more details from.
Just we have this thing in our, if we talk to Sarai, he will explain you more.
Yeah, there's a whole history on this lot.
Okay.
Your secretary.
Okay. Yeah, Cheryl is very, very good.
Absolutely.
Alright, um, okay, Sterling Street, uh, the trucking thing, I've been up there several times. I haven't seen any trucks going around. They built the bridge over, they got a D, they have a D E P, uh.
Yes, that's a separate lot.
Yeah, that's over to the right, I saw that. On the left-hand side, I can see some piles of dirt up there, but I have not seen any, anything coming out of there.
But the, where the building is?
Yep.
The building is in a general residence district. It's not zoned for a construction yard or for whatever they're operating there.
Okay.
Cause that, that's the issue, is that it's a general residence district, no businesses are allowed.
Now?
Jeez.
Or forever?
They're not allowed.
But the, the yard's been there for?
That, I was gonna say, that's gone.
That's gotta do.
It's been there a long time, but it's stopped, the use was stopped for more than two years.
Oh, so was.
Oh, okay.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, those Baldarellis.
Yep, it was a good spot.
So what do they do about that?
They have to move their whole quarry?
Yeah, like what do they do?
The quarry's still allowed, in the back area, yeah. It's just that, it's just that all that storage of equipment and all the crud that's there.
Where do they store it if you, if you go up?
Some, they'll go, they'll probably store it at ninety-nine Harwell Street, they got garage storage there.
Just put on the crooked lines, it'll be okay.
No, ninety-nine Harwell is the one that, your place that used to have just a front door and now it's got the garage base.
That's true.
Your exercise place?
Yeah, my exercise place.
But, I don't know, I, it's, I was talked to by a couple of the neighbors that live up on Trinav, no, no, Horseshoe Drive. Horseshoe Drive and Western Ave, looking down over there, and they're like, I bought a house in a residential district and I bought a general residence district, but I got these trucks that are starting up and backing up and beeping and making all this noise. And I don't, this was last summer, the end of last summer when we first started.
Alright, so I, I will look into that. I was, I was unaware what, what was happening there.
Yep.
Uh, I thought it was an existing business and stuff, I can take care of it.
It's been there a long time, but it stopped when Wally Baldarelli passed away.
In a, in a general residence district and stopped more than two years the business, so, uh, I'll remind them that it's no longer allowed in that area.
Unless they can establish that it's, it was in business just, or something?
Yeah.
Like the business still existed?
They lose their, if they, if they show that they were there for the two years that it was empty.
Was it empty, or was it just not, no, no?
They were having a business.
Nothing. Oh, really?
I'm pretty sure it was five years or so that, if, nothing was going on, but four years maybe, but that's kind of the situation.
Okay, so I got all that, so I'll set, the only other thing you have on here is a sign by law, and, um.
The one that, the thing that we were looking for and we get frequent calls is the idea of signs that are not even on the property, that they're serving.
Alright, now, when, my, that, you're talking about the, uh, fundraising signs?
No, no, this was more for the standing signs. It's a standing sign issue.
The standing sign?
Like properties that are on Route twelve and Route one forty, um, where it's a wide right-of-way and the sign is on the state right-of-way.
Oh, and your site, you're talking about sight line, or, or the?
No, just that the sign's not even on their site, it's not on their property.
Okay.
It's, it's supposed to be ten feet in, on their property.
Yeah, right, that I know, yeah, yeah.
And they aren't even close, they're not even on the property.
Oh, right, it's, it's, some of them are on the sidewalk, basically.
And in our site plan, I mean, in the signed bylaws, we wrote it for however long we did that, five years ago now when Karen was on the board?
Now, is this?
We wrote it so that if it was not in compliance, that they didn't have to rip it out right away when the bylaw went through, but when they renew their sign permit, if they're
That's every five years.
not in compliance, right, so if they're not in compliance, be prepared to move your sign back and make.
We're waiting, so I'm gonna be waiting for them to bring their application in.
Right.
Before I do anything on this.
Right, you don't have to go out and turn on the doors, but when they do submit something, make them follow the sign bylaws.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
We wrote, we wrote it that way to try to slowly get it.
Or get a variance.
Or go for a variance, yeah, that's.
No.
Variance is easy in West Wilson, I've heard.
All right.
Don't get stuck.
Wait until, I'm just gonna put a note here.
What happened with that?
Can you close that window, Mark, for me please?
I'm sorry?
Could you close that window if it's still open?
Okay, um, all right, and the other thing is, um, I've had several questions about, um, signs for fundraisers and stuff, you know, the little.
And there's nothing in our sign bylaw for that?
Nope, there's nothing, uh.
This is like the egg drop and the, uh, horseshoe.
I have picked them up, I've taken them off the property and I.
And those all in the office next door?
They were, they picked them up, and I think maybe at some point, uh, consideration should be made as to having, uh.
I'll do it for them, Mark.
Yeah, for a couple of weeks, I've already had a, um, uh, you, you know, a com- I shouldn't say a complaint, but, well, they did this and they did that, and they're going back, I said, no, that's already, you know, it's all on these, and I told them, I says, you know, I picked them up, so you can't really say that, and he's like, well, what about, I said, I picked them up, you can't really say that. So they, they're not fooling me, I tell them, I did it, I did it, I did it, and they kind of say, well, that's not fair, you know? I think there should be something like two-week period, have it on their property, you know, so if you have a child in school and you can say, all right, um, I wanna put a sign because my child wants to do a fundraiser for, you know, uh, American Girl Dolls or mattresses, why can't I put a sign on my property for two weeks temporary and take it out, so, I think that.
Is there anybody that is exempted from that? Cause I know like the Boy Scouts, they always have one on the tri- on the triangle when they have a can drive.
Yeah, every two weeks they do it.
Yeah, it's for a day, it's a one-day thing, that's.
Yeah, but I mean, so that's okay?
Yeah.
Right, but that's allowed in the.
In the bylaw, yes, yeah.
So we need, so we have to look at.
Get signs and stuff like that.
To non-prob.
Yeah, yeah.
Sandwich board and.
Yeah, that's what I want, the sandwich board.
So we have to, we have to look at the bylaw.
Look at that bylaw and.
If you actually have recommendations, I mean, you read.
I, I'll tell you a, a bottom, but if you want me to put it in writing, I'll put it in writing in my recommendation, cause that's one of them.
Right.
Because if we can go through that, that'll make some very happy fundraisers.
Egg droppers.
Egg droppers, yeah, and the other thing is on the zoning, and I've talked to Dave about this too, and it goes back to our issue with, uh, uh, a certain structure that was built, and that's lot coverage.
Yes.
And there is lot coverage for commercial side, no lot coverage for residential side, and I think that that is something that should be looked at.
Yeah, I was.
Lot coverage, what do you?
Uh, how, how many square feet of building you can put on a lot that's non-conforming?
So, oh, the lot is already non-conforming?
Yes.
Like too small?
Too small.
Or no frontage?
Or.
Or whatever.
Whether it's too small or not, it just have a.
Yeah, yeah, it could be, it could be.
Building coverage could be for a big lot, you just can't put a huge airplane hangar on your.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right, it's because you have this big.
And not just ring, not just limited by setbacks, I mean.
Right, right.
You can't just build the entire lot.
So you have setbacks and you have the idea of no huge buildings.
The perfect example is the lot that's next to the Shell gas station.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
The, the Z B A did approve a special permit for that.
It'd be between the gas station and the nutrition store.
He said that he would not build, cause it's residential and commercial, and that's what he's gonna have, he's gonna have the commercial, he's gonna have businesses on the bottom
Oh, right.
and then residential on the top, but it's a very small lot.
That's a postage stamp sized lot.
But he's only building, he's only building a four thousand square foot building, nothing more.
A four thousand square foot footprint.
And a footprint.
On a twenty thousand square foot lot.
It's not even that.
Not even that.
Nineteen something.
So I'm saying like, you can't, let's make it, a four thousand square foot building on a five thousand square foot lot would not be allowed with lot coverage. That's what, that's why I think we should look.
I mean, I, I like the idea, I'm just thinking what number we can come up with, because we have some issues with the Village Center District, the areas where it's
Yeah.
small and the lots are all tight.
Like I said, I don't have any specific recommendations, but something that should be looked at.
I agree.
Well, I, I like it.
And then.
Yeah.
Maybe we can check with, well, we can check with C M R P C while we're doing this Village Center, we wanna put that in and have them do some research for us.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
I don't know if it's covered by the grant. Just kidding, yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'm.
Thank you, George, that was awesome.
Oh, thank you, uh, and you're gonna give me an updated?
We'll give you a set of plans and an updated list.
Updated list of things?
It probably won't be till next week though.
Oh, great, take your time. Take your time, I know you're busy, you got a lot to do.
It's not an hour to do it, though.
That's good, all right.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that you do now, we appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Okay, next on our list is.
All set, thank you, hope we get up by ten.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
What's your do it, George?
Speedy.
Holy Cross is done?
Yep.
Holy Cross is done?
Because we just talked about it earlier, check it out.
We did, and, uh, is this, did anybody read this?
Yeah, he's gonna send us something.
Yep, I did.
Oh, it's here. Mister Chair.
That's there, but that's just, I don't know where that came from, and he just might have written it and said, yeah, yeah, this'll appease him, but I guess it's something. But what we wanted is what, he said he's gonna give us the ASBILT down below and.
Oh, yeah, 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 well, we have.
Was that the ASBILT?
I believe one of the man's right there probably.
Oh, I, okay. Right, please contact me if you need any further info, I don't even need this much info.
I thought it was rather large, but.
Who gets the fine?
Do we wanna look at that?
Cars are parked in these areas, your group will incur a fine.
Next time, next time.
Do we put on that?
Please, I'm sorry, what do you ask?
No, no, just the, the notice says, if the cars are parked in these areas along the street, the group will incur a fine, do we get the fine?
No, probably not, it's not fine with me, but it's fine with them.
Yeah, I guess.
Um, okay, so we'll do, we'll look at the Holy Cross stuff next time?
Oh, no.
Oh, no, what?
Nothing, huh? I just didn't see the new business items.
Yeah, Village Center zoning update?
Um, we got a draft, did you see it from, um, Eli? He updated it and he sent an email, or did he just send it to me?
No, we didn't, we didn't see.
All right, he just sent it to me, so I will.
Okay.
Send it out to everybody.
Thank you, done.
And I'll ask him for, uh, an item in there about building lot coverage.
Excellent. And would that include just the building or the, or impervious?
Building, that's lot coverage, it could have impervious area coverage.
So you could have a building with a really, really, really big parking lot?
You could. So we can ask, we can ask that, so buildings, like a building? Where am I here?
Just make sure that they ask, you know, that it be specific so that if somebody, if somebody does come to the Z B A, you know, we're not trying to, you know, jog in our minds, because there's a lot of zoning bylaws when people come that we have to make interpretations that, you know.
Right.
Like, if you do, send us an email and list them and we'll try to work on it.
You tighten those up.
Or one of them is.
No, no, send an email, I don't wanna talk about it at ten o'clock at night.
Okay.
It'll go in one ear and out the other ear again, I don't.
New business, Z B A informational petition, petition.
Which one was that?
The first one with the Chiara Garage, I'm, I think this.
I think I did a draft of that, did anyone have any comments?
You did. I just read it just now and I think it's great.
Isn't that good that you're not inundated?
Right, it is.
And just so you know, that was changed because originally she was asking for a variance, and there was a conversation between the building inspector and the chair of the Z B A about one of the, uh, sections, the bylaw section, and they determined that it wasn't a variance, that it was actually
It's a special permit.
a special permit, so she refiled as a special permit.
Yeah, we have to, and we have to work on that section one point four of the bylaws, the zoning as well.
That's probably the most confusing.
Thank you.
So I think this was good.
Which one is this, the petition of Cynthia Sparks?
I looked at it.
What did she wanna do?
She wants to knock down a shed and a, like a, um.
She wants to knock down a shed.
Like a, and a, like a, uh.
A falling.
Covered porch?
Porter, yeah, a falling down porch and sort of a, some kind of a, I don't know, something that connects them.
Right, so she's putting up.
Something that connects them.
Doing an addition on a house.
Stuff that's weird, yeah.
On Main Street, there's currently a little shed porch that comes out, and then there's also a shed.
And why is she asking that, why does she need a?
Why does she need it?
No, no, why, why doesn't she just get a building permit and go?
It's a non-conforming lot, so it's a small lot, so it's under one point four B, it requires special.
And it doesn't have, and it doesn't have the setbacks, I'm particularly interested.
Well, she's now meeting the setbacks, which is nice.
I'm particularly interested, cause I wanna get rid of my crappy garage and chicken house and put a garage that I can go into at that point, so I'd.
What about the chickens?
How are chickens there anymore? But it still smells like chickens, I will let you know.
Is that a nuisance?
It could be, it could be a nuisance.
But it's hard to enforce, that's why.
The, the peeling paint on the building is a nuisance to me as well, so, you know, I would like to get rid of it. Yeah, yeah, I saw that, I was like, ooh, maybe this is what we have to do, right?
Are sending this out?
Any issues with it? Hearing none, uh, the chair will then sign it and send it out.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Sign this exact copy?
Yeah, that, you can use that.
I'll see the originals.
Okay, let's do that, I don't have my stamps, I'll use my pen.
Thanks for keeping it on one page.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay, next item is another Z B A informational petition.
They want to put it in state.
Normally portion of Hartwell Street.
Did you draft one? I didn't do it, that was my email, it said, can someone else draft?
It alerts me, there's like motion or crying or anything.
Am I gonna spend one o'clock to two o'clock doing this one?
You, I mean, you voted against it yourself?
You voted against.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't vote against, you guys voted for it, so, uh.
To send it back to the Z B A.
Right.
Oh wait, oh good, back to that one.
Let's Mark do it.
Mark was gonna do it.
What was I gonna do?
Right.
The recommendation to the Z B A about the Hartwell Street lotting?
Just say, Mark, you know, put it in the prob, book, you know, just say, planning board recommended for that.
There's, I mean, there's, there, there's nothing super substantially different.
Wait, it was the same as it. It was the same thing as it was last time, yeah.
It really, it just, it moved, it moved the line over in the, in the, the one that, it was like one thirty-four and wherever, however they moved the line, now the other one, now the opposite one had a hundred and thirty-six, it's like two feet, I, I mean, I don't think we have anything different to say about whatever we said about it the first.
Oh, did you get that email I sent you about this thing?
Yes.
What do you think, about the fact?
You didn't read my reply?
I haven't seen, I haven't looked at my emails since I wrote that last night, it was about access?
Yes.
And I thought access merely meant on a public street?
Oh, that, what you're trying to.
Now you're saying that access might mean that a wetland precludes access?
Frontage is the.
Frontage is on a.
Along the street, access means you have to really be able to get there.
Right, so now that changes everything in this one.
Well, no, but on that one that you guys already voted on, on Hartwell Street, they did have drivable access on that, on both lots. They had more wetland on it, but there was.
But they're gonna have the common driveway because they couldn't do that.
No, they were sharing a driveway because they were saving money.
Right. And it was gonna be, I don't worry, I'm probably, I thought they said there was like, oh, and looking, it was better for wetlands and whatever, right, yeah, less impervious area, thank you.
I thought that's why they wanted it.
Less impervious areas, what they were looking for.
But are we going with that being the definition of access, like if there's a stream or something like that, now there's no access?
Correct, not unless the.
That's new to me.
When there's a stream going across the property, you don't have access because if, or if there's ledge that's really steep and strong ledge, that's not acceptable access, you need to have access, if they go to the Conservation Commission first and get a permit for a bridge crossing of that wetland, then they have access, then they can come to the, the planning board.
Do you know how many of those are gonna be approved on constructive approvals? They're just gonna come in with the A N R, we're gonna say, no, you can't sign it, you gotta go do something else, and they're just not gonna?
No, if we say no, there's not a constructive approval, we say no and it's done.
You can't say no, it's approval not required.
No, but you can deny an approval not required.
Approval's not required.
But it's, it doesn't meet the standard for an approval not required, approval not required has to have frontage and access, if it does not have one or the other.
Yeah. Right, no, I'm just saying we changed our access definition a little bit.
You might have, I haven't.
I thought access merely meant frontage on a public road, oh, but if you can't get to the land without going over a stream or a canyon.
That's not what it said.
Some people could argue, I could get over the stream or the.
Right, but if you looked at, I sent a reference with it, with a link.
Yeah. Should I bring it up on screen?
No, no, wait, 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 are we talking about, what are we talking about?
He's talking about the.
We're just talking about the email that is towed, that is not on the agenda.
No, it's the same thing, it's, it's whether we should approve the A N R that they get, after they get the variance to get the right frontage, right?
It's related to that.
It's part of it, yes, but according to the state A N R guidance document.
Yeah.
It says you need frontage and you need access, and it talks specifically about it on page, I think it's fourteen, cause I sent you the sixteen maybe on the quote.
I'm just impressed that somebody read my emails, that's pretty good. Cool, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll read it.
You can go to the link and read yourself to sleep tonight.
I don't, I'm not gonna even have to.
No.
All right, so minutes?
So, Mark.
So we said okay?
Reports from other.
We said okay to the letter?
We don't have a letter, so I would just.
I'm not gonna write a letter.
Review modifications to approve site plan for Briarwood, continuing care retirement care? About that one? You gonna talk about Briarwood?
Yes, you're in charge, yes.
Yeah.
So the modifications, we got a recommendation from V H P that, that says it's not a major change, even though it's like
Oh, yeah.
a bunch of drainage calps and that kinda stuff, it's basically just changing the drainage system from one style to another style of plastic trench and as opposed to going deep, cause they ran into ledge.
Changes are minor.
Right, so they recommend, recommending that it's minor, they asked that it be minor, so all we have to do is agree that it's minor and move on, if everyone else agrees.
It's more.
I, I did read that, I don't.
Do we agree it's minor?
I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that.
They recommended it, it makes sense.
But they, yeah, they, it seemed very clear in the recommendation, I thought, that sounds reasonable, so.
I don't wanna not be minor, so there we go, I don't want it to not be a minor change.
Minor, we're all on the minor team.
Do not want it to not be?
I don't wanna have to amend their fourteen-year-old plan.
All right, so we'll accept it as a minor change and it'll be shown on the ASBILT or whatever.
See it on ASBILT or whatever.
Yep.
So what's the action item then?
Yeah, we'll just do that.
Record it in the minutes?
We're accepting it as a.
Okay, done.
Yeah.
Okay.
I looked at it electronically.
You did?
So that?
Briarwood.
You wanna look at this?
So this is, this is.
This is a minor change, I'm okay.
That's the change, it's gonna be reflected in the ASBILT.
That's it?
Yes.
Reports from other boards?
I went to one.
You did?
I got invited. Yeah, economic development and, um, we did a drawing for the two signs that we have, the average twelve and the one forty.
The new one, everybody know, did you know?
The new one, yes, it's a new one.
The new what?
Uh, great, the gateway signs, yeah, so there's, so the businesses can advertise, um, we talked about, uh, uh, we are gonna, we wanna allow the businesses to advertise in the backs, the signs too, to do drawings for that, so there was a number of.
Now leaving what?
Motions made, motions made, that then there will have to be a public hearing about amending bylaw to allow all these certain things, but, uh, so more, so more to come on that, but the idea would be that for a lesser amount of money, you could advertise on the backside of the sign, right? Being, you know, as that would not be as prime a placement, right?
Next time you go by, visit my business.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, you're leaving, but next time you can turn around and, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry to see you go, you forgot to visit.
Yeah. Uh, and that there, there need to be some changes to the form as.
Right.
For, well, first of all, in general, we need to ask for like, you know, contact information, like email.
Right, the name of the company that they want.
The name of the company, some basic things on the form, some basic things on the form should be included, um, and then also we should, the, in this case, you, cause some, some folks might not want to do the front of the sign, cause it's more expensive, so there should be options on there, or maybe they would be happy to do either, cause you know, we're drawing them out of a hat, right, so.
And they don't know if they should pay until they get drawn.
Right, so they need to have options, you know, if they're only willing to do a backside, cause they only wanna pay, spend, you know, hundred fifty bucks, then, fine, so, it was very exciting.
It was a great time.
It was, it was, it was wonderful.
You were there too?
I'm as a citizen, I'm on the same board, yeah.
How come we had a citizen who had a block?
Well, I was on it for planning board and then.
You liked it so much, you wanted to get on it again?
Yes.
Wow.
Well, it's, it's.
He run a drawl that.
What? I do all their letters, I write all their letters and stuff like that, I do all that.
That's why we have an economic drawl up on this.
You're right, you set up their forms?
I set up their forms, I write all that.
And we also, so, yeah, yeah, that's.
Well, like, you asked for round of coffee.
I should set up the forms, that is my, that's my actual job, you know, so like, I'm, I did take the minutes.
You took the minutes?
Nice.
I tried it, I, having done that as a real job early in my career, I tried to avoid minute taking at all costs, but I, I, I did do it.
Well, that's an easy meeting to do, there's not much going on.
Give him a, give him a bet?
Yeah, so anyway, it was, it was good and, uh, and we talked about trying to, I mean, I, I, it seems like businesses don't necessarily know that they could enter these drawings and so we should do a better job of advertising that.
Any other boards?
Nope.
Nope, nope, nope. I went to the same meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good deal.
Uh, we do have some other correspondence here, senior center revised handicap parking layout, did we all see that?
Just now.
There you go.
What are we seeing?
The, uh, yeah, they've already, they're.
You're doing it?
Changing, everything's opened up and we haven't finished the site plan review yet, but, nothing new.
So this is usual, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
We're voting there though, May twentieth, right?
Oh, are we?
No.
June fourth.
June fourth.
Oh, yeah.
Call meeting is May twentieth.
Yeah, oh, good, we're voting, oh, good.
May third is the open house in Ribbon Cut.
May fourth is open house.
Nice.
And there's gonna be an item story this week?
On Facebook, did you watch it?
I don't, not all the time.
That's good.
Sorry.
It's good, sooner you get that field fixed, the better.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have minutes from our continued public hearing, our, our very brief continued public hearing, and we have meeting minutes from last time, which we adjourned at a much.
With, without a stake on any of it, right?
Any discussion or comments or, or corrections on the minutes?
No. No, no, I'm gonna move both of the minutes.
You're moving it?
Yep.
Okay, April tenth, meeting minutes, both of them, I hear a, a motion to approve both of them as written.
I, uh, move to approve the meeting minutes.
Well, he made it, we hear a second.
Oh, sorry, second.
All in favor?
I was still reading. Aye.
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 Done. So, we have. Oh, yeah.
Green cards? We sent them to all the reporters?
Yeah.
Didn't know we sent them.
Oh, he hasn't paid?
Nope, somebody needs to contact him, it's been five months and that's.
Hey Raj, where you going?
Is this, is this the, is this the one that we, uh?
We need a payment.
Had trouble with, and he said he was gonna pay it?
I'm happy to send him an email.
Are you? Yeah, okay.
Keep that copy of, that's just a copy of it.
Okay, that's for you then.
Do you want me to go to the bathroom for you? I'll go to the bathroom for you.
Thanks, Mark, yeah, um, we have a bill from VHB, eighty-nine dollars for, um.
This is a copy, tell them?
It's a copy, you know. This is for, uh, what is this for? Say? Does it say? Doesn't say that.
No, good thinking.
Yeah, let's go.
Do you need any of these, we have a hundred copies.
No, it's wrong way, I didn't know, I didn't realize.
Western Circle, forty bucks.
What?
That's it, they should be out there more often.
Or is they, or is they, or as they called it before, wasteland circle?
Yeah.
That was bad.
That was pretty funny.
Western Circle? Yeah, he's almost, he's grading, he's got drainage. Oh, yeah. At the corner? Yeah.
The fencing and the shedding, the shed?
I think it's changing.
I haven't, she hasn't talked to me, so I'm not sure.
On developments, are they required to have designs that tells you what the development is?
These guys? What are their addresses?
No, they usually do that for advertising to sell them, but they're not required to.
Nope.
But doesn't that help them, if it just, if it's a fire?
Thanks.
Um, no, in our signed bylaws, it's allowed, but.
Is that it? Oh, wait.
You don't have to do it.
Next meeting, May eighth.
We have a discussion about adjournment?
More sometime, Jen.
We have a discussion about adjournment?
Um, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.